Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Cablecast Post Agenda on the Plan for Homelessness in the Winter for February, November 22nd, 2024. I am Councilwoman Bob Sharland. I'll be chairing this meeting. Want to acknowledge that we are joined by Councilwoman Warwick and Councilman Coghill. And I don't believe we have any members online at the moment. And want to allow you to introduce yourselves here and talk a little bit about why I wanted to call for this.
Lee Schmidt, Public Safety Director, City of Pittsburgh.
Camila Larkong, Assistant Director to Public Safety, oversee the Office of Community Health and Safety.
Ben Tallick, Program Manager for the Roots Team, Office of Community Health and Safety.
Aaron Dalton, Director at the County's Department of Human Services.
Andy Halfhill, Administrator of Homeless Services Programs at Allegheny County DHS.
All right. Thank you all for being here. So the reason that we called for this post-agenda, and I believe we called it, called for it, late, very late summer, is that last year it felt like there wasn't a plan that was prepared for us and something we were aware of until it was, winter was already here. So we'd been working for a while to try to schedule this. Glad that we were finally able to all get together and the calendars were able to coordinate. I promised you it was not scheduled on the first cold wave of the, of the year. We didn't know that it would be snowing today when this actually did end up on the calendar, but there's really no time like today to talk about this. My concern for this, I know that we have been talking a lot and will continue to talk a lot about our homelessness situation in the city of Pittsburgh. I really want to narrow the focus though for today on what our plan is for the winter and frankly, how we will stop people from dying out in the cold over the 2024, 2025 winter. And that's, that's the goal for today and that's really what I want to focus on. So I believe you have a level of a presentation?
Yeah, our partners from DHS have a presentation which I'll bring up here.
Okay, if we get started then? Okay. And we included a bit more-
Director, I think you need to bring your microphone, or there's something wrong with your microphone.
Maybe. Better? Better? Okay. Yeah. We included a bit of a broader presentation. So we certainly have all of the information on winter shelter. And I've been director for three years. This is, I think, the best position we've been in. We work, winter does not like sneak up on us. We are planning all year round for winter, trying to put in place solutions. As you know, it's also difficult to locate spaces where people will accept folks who are experiencing homelessness. But I think this plan will protect people this winter. So we're happy to talk about that. But we do have a bit of a broader presentation. Councilmember Warwick asked if we would start in kind of explaining, defining the issue of homelessness. So we'll do that. And I'll let Andy Halfhill on my team jump in. But I mean, there's a lot of different definitions of homelessness. So when we think about in the school system and education system, there's the McKinney-Vento definition of homelessness, which really is about housing instability and couch surfing. When we think about this on the HUD side, the federal Housing and Urban Development side, this is literal homelessness, right? So sleeping in a place that is not intended for human habitation. But the thing I want to point out, and it's a really just tricky thing as we think about planning in this area, whether you look at the census data and the number of people that kind of live with other people, or other information about folks doubled up, we have tens of thousands of people in our community that are housing unstable, right? Tens of thousands. And we don't know at any given day who's going to need our help. That's different than the people we really do know about who are staying on our streets that Ben and his team and our field outreach teams and street medicine talk with every day, right? So those are different, different things. Yeah. All right. Better. Okay. Better. Okay. I don't know how to use microphones apparently. I don't know. Andy, would you add anything to that definition of homelessness?
Yeah, I think the only thing I would just add is, I mean, so HUD does have a formal definition that is on one of their websites that kind of lays out like four components to what it means to be somebody who's experiencing homelessness. And I think really that definition really applies as it relates to people who are being served in HUD-funded programs. So as, as our system is making referrals and sort of serving people across the number of housing programs, which we'll explain, HUD has requirements around what that means. It could be somebody who is literally experiencing homelessness in the moment, does not have a place to stay. It could be people who are at imminent risk of losing housing. There's four parts to that definition, but just want to mention that when we talk about the shelter system, that sort of definition does not really apply. You know, our shelters will serve anybody who is, does not have a safe place to stay at that night. So there's no sort of checking to make sure that somebody meets a definition for shelter purposes.
And HUD will also consider those folks to be homeless. So when you, when we talk about, and we will, the annual point in time count, you see a couple of different categories. One, there are people who are staying in shelter. So they're still considered to be homeless because that's not, you know, that's not real housing. All right. So you got, you've got control here? Okay, great. Let's move along. I don't, I won't go into great detail about the Department of Human Services, but just for awareness, we, you know, we do a number of other services. We run the Child Protection System. We run the Behavioral Health Services. We run the Homelessness System, Services for Seniors, and serve about 200,000 people every year. So just for kind of awareness for what, which the kind of homeless system sits. Let's go to the next slide. So I'm going to have, if it's okay with council members, have Andy go through just a little bit of a broader context around, because there's been questions before from council members about how this works, how we're funded, how we're structured, how this, perhaps the city plays a role in the continuum of care. And then we will go into, what we've got here is a little bit of a, kind of a recap for how shelter winter went last year, how we expect winter and how we've planned for winter to go this year. And then I've also got some additional slides on the 500 and 500 initiative, which again is a really important piece of bringing on housing so that people can exit the shelter system and move into, into housing. If we don't have that flow through the system, then we'll never have enough shelter, ever, ever, ever. You'll be building shelter every single year and you won't have enough if we don't have flow into the housing system. That sound okay? Okay. All right. Glad you have that in front of you because you're not going to be able to read that.
Yeah. So yeah, just to, just to help set some context about, so I think when a lot of folks think about homelessness, they think about folks that they see outside, or perhaps folks who are staying in shelter. But there are a lot of different services that make up the homeless continuum of care. Those are sort of listed out here and I'll kind of talk through those real quickly. So you may know the Allegheny LINK. This is what our coordinated entry system is. So HUD, HUD wants communities to be organized in a way in which we're really, folks who are experiencing homelessness, who are vulnerable, are able to access these services and be prioritized. And so part of that is our great system at the LINK that, that talks to people throughout the day, goes out in the field, engages with folks, and prioritizes them for our longer-term housing programs. We also do a ton of work around prevention. So homeless prevention programs, trying to keep people out of shelter, trying to keep people off the streets. So helping with rental assistance, payments, things like that, paying utility bills to help keep people out of the system. That's really critical. Next is street outreach. So there are a lot of different street outreach providers that operate throughout the county. We work with, with all those in different ways. We fund one of them and we have our own internal team as well. So street outreach is, you know, a service in which people are going out, engaging with folks who are living on shelter, helping them to get connected to services, helping them to meet their basic needs, things like that. Ben could speak much better about what street outreach looks like. And then emergency shelter. So we have a sort of a myriad of shelters that exist throughout the county that are serving families with children, that are serving single individuals. It's a mixture of what we call congregate shelters. So that's several people staying in one space, in one room, or in multiple rooms. And other shelters that operate a little differently, that may be one person per room, or a few people per room, depending on the situation there. So we have a lot of different shelters that exist throughout the county. It's meant to be a short-term service. The goal is for people to stay a short time, to be able to return to their previous stable housing situation, or be assisted from there into longer-term housing. So goal is for people to stay a month or less. Bridge housing is a service that we fund mostly with our state funding. Bridge housing is meant to be, again, a sort of a longer-than-shelter service. It's generally about 12 months with some exceptions for a little bit longer than that. But this is meant to serve folks who are, just, just need a little bit more time and they go through the Allegheny LINK and then are served there. So, and then our biggest part of our system is our permanent housing program. So at any given time, we have roughly 2,000 households who are folks who are no longer experiencing homelessness. They, they have moved from living in shelter or living on the streets into a permanent housing program. And it's generally in apartments scattered throughout the county. So rapid rehousing is a component of that. And that is, again, a service that can last up to 24 months. Our service providers are providing case management and helping folks to identify housing and, and kind of move on from there within 24 months. And supportive housing is a service in which folks typically have been chronically homeless. They have some sort of disability and that might be a long-term situation. And so people can stay, stay for a longer time there. So those types of services are generally funded by HUD. So as I said, we have a lot of capacity. We have roughly 2,000 units of housing. When I say units, I don't actually mean apartments that the county owns, but rather sort of spaces, slots that, as we contract with service providers to operate these programs, at any given time, there's roughly 2,000 people, 2,000 households that are being served that are no longer in shelter, no longer on the street, and are having success in permanent locations. The system serves a lot of people throughout the year. So roughly across all these different types of services, there's over 9,000 people who are, who are being served at any given time. I won't go into all the details there, but you can see sort of the mix of ages. Typically, people in the, from the mid-30s to mid-50s is the highest group of people who are experiencing homelessness. Predominantly households without children, although we are serving an increasing number of families with children. And we see a lot of racial disproportionality in the system. So while the county is roughly 13% black, we over-serve that in the population. So roughly 57% of people who are in the system are black or African-American.
How many percent was that?
57%.
57.
Yeah, it's roughly four times the, the representation of folks who exist in the county.
Absolute population, right.
Yeah. So we try to quantify the, the needs of the population in different ways. And this sort of highlights one way, which is our annual point in time count. I think generally folks hear about this each year. This is the sort of a HUD-required effort to once a year, try to count and enumerate the number of people who are experiencing homelessness, whether it's unsheltered or, or in a sheltered situation. So this graph just sort of shows over the last 13 or so years, that the sort of trend, trends that have existed in our county with respect to people experiencing homelessness. So we certainly have, have seen in recent years an uptick in the number of people experiencing both sheltered and unsheltered homelessness.
Right there. I mean, it's probably obvious, but as we bring on more shelter or transitional housing, the number of people experiencing homelessness will go up because that people in those shelters count as homelessness. I'm not worried about that form, if you will, of homelessness, because then we're helping to bring people inside, moving them through the system into housing. What I think we are all really concerned about is unsheltered homelessness, which is also seeing an increase, right? So, you know, if this year's point in time found that we were on the, on the whole, experiencing more homelessness in our community, but, but that unsheltered homelessness had dropped by half, I'd be thrilled. And I, you know, I would think you all would be as well. So just, it's just, you know, the way different federal agencies think about this issue can be confusing. But just wanted to point out, as we build, as we bring on more shelter resources, our homelessness count goes up. But again, that's, that's in order to bring folks through the system and get them housed.
Wanted to talk briefly about, about some different bodies and groups that are involved in this work. I think sometimes there's some confusion around what a continuum of care is with the Homeless Advisory Board. So from HUD's perspective, HUD provides resources to communities that are organized into what's called a continuum of care. So Allegheny County has a continuum of care. It's a, a network of community-based organizations, the county, the city, funding entities, that sort of all are working collaboratively to have a stake in, in working to end homelessness. So as part of that, that larger group, then there is what's called the Homeless Advisory Board, which is a, a advisory board that meets every two months to help inform policy and decision-making around homelessness in the county. And the Homeless Advisor Board includes a number of people from across the county that work in different entities, whether they're service providers, whether they are funding entities, whether they work for local government. So myself and Director Frank, Chief Frank, work, are on the Homeless Advisor Board. From there, then DHS has been set up by the HAB as the infrastructure organization, which means that we sort of are responsible for the day-to-day operation of, of a lot of these services. Receiving funding through HUD, operating a lot of these services. I've gone through the definition there of what the Homeless Advisor Board is. The Homeless Advisor Board, I said, meets, meets every two months and has a lot of different committees that, that are composed of it, that are part of it, that HAB has a strategic plan that has recently ended and is currently working on a process for a new strategic plan. All of that to say that there is just a lot of work that happens at this level to both try to assess the needs of, of this population, to try to, to plan for strategies and policies for the future, to apply for this funding from HUD, to evaluate programs and policies and all that together. So it is a very robust and well-organized group. As part of that, there are some committees that exist that sort of really get the work done. So there's a data and planning committee. There's a homeless outreach and coordinating committee, an education committee, a provider committee, and an executive committee. So all these committees meet, meet throughout the month to get a lot of, a lot of the work done. I think that provides a pretty high level of review of the work that, what the COC is, the kind of services that, that exist. I can pause there and see if there are any questions before we talk about last winter.
What are the next closest places that give us, that are, that are also receiving COC dollars?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? What are the next places?
So you went over how like Allegheny County receives COC dollars, DHS runs those dollars.
Yeah.
There's the HAB. Who are our other closest regional areas that receive COC dollars?
So, so, so there are, I think, 440 or so type COCs across the country as organized by HUD. Ours is the county. I think Beaver County has their own separate COC. And then a number of Western Pennsylvania-
I'm sorry, who'd you say? Who else?
Beaver County has its own.
So the closest one is Beaver?
Yeah. And then there are a number of regional, like there's a Western Pennsylvania COC, continuum of care, that kind of clusters a, a lot of other Western Pennsylvania counties together into a similar type of collaborative. Yeah. All right. Maybe if we can move down to slide 14, which we'll talk a little bit about last winter. Just want to revisit kind of how last winter went as a preview for, for the plans for this winter. So last winter, I think was, was a great success in terms of how, how the winter went. One thing that was different last winter is we didn't have the operation of the Smithfield Shelter downtown. Instead, we, we operated a decentralized model for overflow shelters. And so a number of our currently existing providers that operate year-round shelters expanded their capacity for the season to welcome in additional folks who had needs. So we had five overflow programs last year, Second Avenue Commons, Light of Life, East End Quadrant Ministries, Salvation Army, Unity Recovery. All of those folks flexed up their capacity to serve additional people. We also had DHS staff who were present at Second Avenue Commons every evening to just help folks who, who might have presented there to get to some of these locations. To, to help navigate transportation and things like that. Additionally, we operated what we call a Code Blue Shelter that happened at the, at the AMN Recreation Center. That, that was active when we had some really cold nights last winter. And so we would have folks present at Second Avenue Commons and receive transportation up to that shelter, you know, receive a place to sleep and meals and whatnot. In addition, additionally, we also expanded services at the Unity Recovery Drop-In Center on the South Side. Just want to mention, you mentioned real quickly a little bit about our capacity last year. So this, this visual just sort of shares the sort of distribution of beds that we had at different agencies for last winter. All told, once we added the winter shelter and the additional overflows, we had over 630 spots for folks last year. Really is a sort of a robust network of different providers who are, who are, you know, serving people throughout the year and collaborating to make sure that people get access to shelter.
I'll just make one point. So we, I think Andy said that we had, we had a strong plan that went really well, and I think that ends up being true. But I'll just say, it wasn't the plan we wanted, right? We, folks here know, we were trying to open additional shelter capacity last winter, to have additional year-round shelter, or at least winter shelter. And we weren't able to get that done, right? And so that is the position we were in, in opening Code Blue. And I'll let Andy talk about that a little bit, because I think, I think it was both really good for the teams in order to really work directly with people. So often, we, we serve folks through provider agencies, but as Andy said, we, there were DHS staff at Second Avenue Commons every night getting people to those shelter systems, operating Code Blue. And I think we did a great job for our community with that, with the help of the city and street medicine and, and many others. But it wasn't what we wanted, just, just to be clear. It was what we could do, and I think we did the best we could with, with that.
Yeah, next slide, please. Just, just to highlight a little bit more about how it worked. We, we would have the Code Blue activated when the temperature fell to 26 degrees or below. That ended up being 31 nights last winter. We actually had a pretty mild winter. A lot of the nights that we actually were activated were, were when the temperature was above that. But it just made sense to be open. But this really took a lot of collaboration from a lot of different entities. I won't necessarily read all of them that are on there, but certainly was, was the county, the city, a number of outreach partners, Pittsburgh Regional Transit, the Downtown Partnership. We had various street medicine groups. So it took a lot of partners working really closely together to make this work. Really proud of how that worked. Yeah, go ahead into the next slide. So just to give some numbers for, for last year with Code Blue, we had, again, 31 nights we were open. We ended up serving 372 people, distinct people at that shelter at AMN last year. That represented almost 1,100 bed nights, essentially, counting people served across that time period. Nearly 40% of people that were served there were really using shelter for the first time ever. It was the first, first experience using shelter, and that's where they, that's where they went. And this is a little surprising to us, but, but like less than half of the people that, that used winter shelter are actually folks who are not, are kind of new to the system, that perhaps are experiencing some, some housing instability and are not really typically regularly engaged in shelter outreach. Yeah. The next slide, please. Just, just a little bit of a distribution of the numbers that we saw. You can really see the sort of the dates that we were open there. We didn't really have very high numbers, kind of ranged from, you know, in the teens up to, up to nearly 50. We had a couple of higher days in the year '75 where, because one of the shelters was closed. But otherwise, we didn't have really, really high numbers throughout the winter. Next slide, please. You'll see that most of the people that came to the Code Blue Shelter last year were there once and that was it. They were able to kind of move on to a year-round shelter that could serve them, or they were able to return to where they were living before. So 259 of the 372 people that, that were served in the winter shelter were there one night and that was it. And it really went down from there. As we, as we reflect sort of on how winter went last year, and we think about kind of what DHS then was focusing on to try to improve the shelter system, there was a number of data points that we were really looking at, how does shelter work, right? The goal is for people to stay in shelter a short period of time, sort of then be able to leave shelter to some sort of permanent housing situation, return to where they were living before and whatnot. So we see that the vast majority of people who use shelter go to one shelter and they have success and then they move on. And so nearly 75% of people that go to shelter, go to that single shelter, then they move on. And most of them stay, stay for a very short time. So half the people that go to shelter stay there for two weeks at the most or less and move on. So typically, folks are moving on. But we do find that a lot of people then end up staying for a long period of time because of sort of inability to access permanent housing, which we'll speak to a little bit later. And I mentioned the 2,000 or so units of permanent housing that, that exist in the continuum, that, that only roughly 10% of the people that use shelter actually are able to get into those programs. So really, the big concern is sort of flow through the system, helping people to exit shelter and have places to go. And so our focus has really been on trying to improve that flow and add new services. So yeah, if you could move to the next slide. We have done a lot of work with partners over the last several months to really expand a lot of services that, that weren't there previously to help people who are in shelter, to not live in shelter, but to be able to move on as quickly as they can. And so I'll just describe a couple of those things that we have been doing. One has been sending weekly reports with, to all of our shelters to help them see who are the, the folks that are staying there that, that have income, that, that are eligible for permanent housing programs, and kind of working with them on that. We've built our internal staffing team to be able to help people work closely to identify subsidized housing throughout the community and, and to find it. So at any given time, we have 50 to 60 households in the system that we are working with to, to look for housing and to apply for that housing. Go ahead to the next slide. We're also working closely with the housing authorities to use the preference, homeless preference program to help folks to be able to move directly from shelter into subsidized units through the housing authorities. So we have our, the staff at shelters working closely with our team at DHS to be able to make those referrals and make those matches. We also have launched a shallow rent program that is operated by Action Housing. It helps people who, who sort of just need some additional assistance with kind of making rent. And so trying to bridge that gap, the affordability gap that exists, and as long as there's, there's income there that, within a certain range, and they just need a little bit of assistance to, to meet that rent, that's what that program is set up to do. A few additional initiatives is a Home Again Kinship Program, which just helps people to connect to family and friends that may be able to provide support in housing to people who, who need to exit shelter. Providing furniture, assistance with IDs, first month's rent and security deposit, and things like that. So there's a lot, I mean, I'll have to say, there's a lot of work that has, we are focusing on at DHS to really help people to leave shelter, like to eliminate the barriers that might be there that would keep people from exiting very quickly. And why is this important? Because we want people to experience homelessness as briefly as possible. We want stays to be as brief as possible. We want our shelters to, to not- We want our shelters to not be full. I mean, ideally, we would not build more and more shelters. We would have people being able to be in housing because that is the solution. So yeah, and then we're just trying to kind of continuing to build a culture within our shelter system of low barriers and safe and housing-focused shelter. That's sort of a summary of what we did last year, how last winter went. Happy to transition now to kind of plans for this winter. If I could move to slide 28. Yeah, so sort of a few different components of, Aaron, would you like me to do this?
Yeah, no, you can, go ahead. Please, go ahead. I'll jump in if I want to.
Okay, so sort of three things that we'll kind of highlight as part of the strategy for this year. I think building on the success of what worked last year. There's a link here to a press release that the county put out that the folks can access. A big part of this is ensuring that there are safe and warm places for people to be during the day. So a key part of that is expanding the hours of the engagement center at Second Avenue Commons. Previously, pre-fire, it was open just five days a week, nine to five. And with the reopening, and this will actually exist past the winter as well, that is actually open seven days a week from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So that, you know, provides a warm place for people to be, support with, accessing other services, meals, et cetera. We've also, similar to last year, just reopened a number of overflows. We couldn't do this without the partners that we have. So I mentioned Mercy with Second Avenue Commons, Light of Life, East End Cooperative Ministries, Salvation Army, and Unity Recovery. Again, opening these overflows that worked so well last year to help people, not just all in a sort of centralized location, but spread out in places around the city, around the county, that where folks are. So those are part of the plan. And then we will be opening a dedicated winter shelter in the coming weeks that will be located on the north side, in partnership with the North Side Partnership Project, to operate a low-barrier winter shelter in that location. And similar to the way that the shelter worked at AMN last year, we will work with people to provide transportation from Second Avenue Commons, provide access to meals and other supportive services there. So real excited about that opportunity. We have handouts we can share that, because there's no way anybody will be able to read all these words here, but just provides a summary of some of the resources that we do have this winter. Just kind of makes that easy to access. Provides a description of the different shelters that are operating, the capacity, how to access them, where they're located, some additional information about things like being able to, you know, access storage and showers and various components of the service there. A lot of this information exists on our website as well. So there's a QR code there to our website that makes the information available there as well. Just kind of skip through these next two slides. I think just, I don't know, just kind of highlighting some more of the, there are a lot of resources that exist. Some of these are not necessarily funded by the county, but they're part of the overall continuum of care and provide, you know, safe and warm drop-in places for people throughout the county. If you want to skip to, yeah, to that slide, just kind of highlighting again. I mentioned the dedicated winter shelter that will open shortly. But again, we have these overflow shelters that are in place to help people. So just, you can see the capacity there, ranging from 12 to 40 people. Yeah, the plan was for these to open on the 15th of this month, and some have, and some are coming online here today and next week. So that's that, those are the overflow programs. Talk a little bit more about the North Side Partnership Winter Shelter. DHS did put out an RFP to solicit proposals for that service. Had a sort of a group of people that were community members and DHS and city staff to help evaluate those proposals and selected the North Side Partnership Project and community family advocates for this project. Again, anticipate serving 75 to 100 people each night, starting on the 11th of November, so 11th of December and running through March. Again, mentioned the transportation and some of the other services that will be there. A really key thing last winter was having the ability to have a place where folks who, I mean, the service is typically for, really designed to help people come in out of the cold when it's really cold, and having services there like street medicine groups, access to street outreach providers who know these folks, and being able to come in and meet with them there as well. Yeah, do that one, yeah.
I'll just, we can pause for questions. We can pause for questions, for sure. The, a thing to mention about this year's plan is it does not include Code Blue, right? We don't need Code Blue this year because we believe we have enough spaces in the system to support everyone, and our shelter system will allow people to stay during the day. We have daytime engagement spaces. And I mean, of course, we will monitor this. If this doesn't hold, we will do what we have to do in order to support people. But ideally, you don't have a Code Blue system. You have a system that people can come into every day. So that's one thing just to mention. I'll just give you some ways that we think about how we're tracking that people that are unhoused. I mentioned at the top that there are tens of thousands of people that are in our community that are unstably housed, and we don't know who they are on any given day. It is why the majority of the shelter system does still, even when we have such high rental prices and such, you know, difficulty getting folks into housing, why still the population of shelter turns over so quickly. These are short-term needs, and people are able to exit. But a couple of ways that we think about how we measure. So one is we've got a group of folks who are, who case conference. They focus on the people. So these are folks on Ben's team and Camila's team, as well as our street outreach teams and our field units. And they meet every week, and they talk about individual people who they know to be living on the street. And then we also have folks who ride the trails, who go to the places where we believe there are group encampments or groups of people who are unhoused, and we count, right? So we get a weekly count of encampments and tents. As well, we do the annual point-in-time count, and that's, you know, one time, sort of all hands on deck, all street outreach teams, everyone available to get a point-in-time count. So we are tracking closely the number of people who are staying on the street, and included some of those numbers for you, right? So, you know, about 200 people on the case conferencing list right now. And the number of kind of tents on the street have been hovering in the past couple of weeks, around 100, down to about 99 in the last count this week. But we watch that every week. It could change. And then, as you saw on the point-in-time count from last year, so that's last January, is, you know, of course, the least reliable measure. Those are not going to be the same people, most likely, was at 169. So let me pause. The next set of slides are really about 500 and 500. I mean, the thing for folks to know is we have sort of two problems. I mean, this is not the 500 and 500 slides, but we've got people who are experiencing short-term challenges who end up in our shelter system. We've seen a tenfold increase in seniors in the shelter system. These are people who have worked all of their lives, who cannot make the rent, yeah, and have not, cannot make rental payments, and who we cannot get out quickly anymore because the rents have gone up so much, because there's so much pressure on particularly the low-income side of the rental housing market, and we can't help those people to move fast enough. And if those people are going to continue to stay in our shelter, we're never going to have enough space for people who are staying outside. So we've got that problem. And you kind of heard Andy saying this, but I'll just say it more clearly. None of our dollars, not a single federal dollar, not any of our state dollars, really goes to helping those folks, right? The money that we have are to help the chronically homeless, very vulnerable, highest-risk population, and I'll talk about them in a second. All of our efforts to date that you've heard Andy talking about in the past year are about creating wholly new programs for this low-vulnerability, low-risk group, you know, these seniors, if you will, who we need to help get out now, who were able to get out of shelter before on their own, self-resolve. It's not happening anymore. We've had to create those programs out of full cloth. So we've got that issue. And then obviously, we certainly have seen an increase in, you know, really, I think, sick folks staying on our streets who have serious mental illness that we can't get into care, who are experiencing substance use disorder, and are staying in our encampments, and that has also grown, right? So we want to be able to make sure that those folks have a place to stay in our shelter system, can move through the shelter system into housing, particularly the housing that HUD pays for. That's our rapid and permanent supportive housing programs that can only be used for that highest vulnerability, those highest vulnerability people, while we also move the kind of lower-risk folks through the system so we can have room, right? All things being equal, it is the folks on the street who I want in that no shelter so that they can move through in our housing programs. But today, we've got both things happening. We've got, you know, this lower-vulnerability group who used to be able to leave, who are staying much longer in our shelter system because of all of the pressures on rent and so on, coupled with this, you know, pretty vulnerable population that we've got to help move through the system. So why don't I pause? Because I think this really was about winter shelter. So let me pause and see if there's questions, and I'm happy to talk a little bit more about if folks are interested. 500 and 500, which is that effort to get those lower-vulnerability people through the system so that we will have place for people who are staying outside.
Okay, I want to acknowledge that since the presentation started, Councilman Wilson and Councilwoman Gross have joined us. I don't think we have anyone online yet. Do you mind if we go in order? If you've got questions now, is that okay with members? Okay, Councilwoman Warwick?
Sure, yes, happy to go first. Thank you. So can you just, can you repeat again, just so I get it? So what is the percentage of people? And you gave an age range, mid-50s to, can you repeat that one for me?
Yeah, this data comes from 2023, people that were served across the system. The numbers probably are similar for this time period now. So yeah, from age 35 to, let's say, 54, that represents about 40% of the people being served are in that age range.
Okay, and could you just, for my benefit? So we're talking about, so there's, there are older folks who are in the emergency shelters now who can't leave because they can't find housing. I guess I'll take a step back. Can you just give, I know I asked for a definition of homelessness. I guess sort of, who are the type, I mean, that was at the beginning, but who, what are the types of people that we see? Sort of the range of types of people that we see experiencing homelessness in the county?
Yeah, and, you know, if folks have time, there's, there are a couple of reports on our website on Allegheny Analytics. There's a report describing the families we see in the family shelter system, and then there's a report on the people we see in the kind of what we think of as the singles shelter system. So much more detail there, and they look, they look pretty, they look pretty different, right? So it's hard to talk about them as one, as one thing. But I think you do see, you do see all kinds. And I mean, I invite Ben and Camila and others to add in here. You see the kinds of folks who folks think of as homeless, who they see on the street, who they, who may appear and present as if they have, you know, serious behavioral health disorders. You see, you see people in relationships who have been kicked out of their home by a partner for a day or two or longer, right? So, and you certainly see, and this tends to be more women, but it's not exclusively women, people who are experiencing intimate partner violence in the system. You obviously see the whole family side of homelessness as well. And as I mentioned, I've been using the seniors today, as we talk about it, as kind of a proxy, if you will, for the kind of low-vulnerability people that we are seeing. These are, again, people with jobs who can't, who can't find a place to stay, right? So they may be seniors, they may be younger than that, but they're, you know, they're people just like, you know, people who live in your communities who get a couple of medical bills, or the landlord hikes the rent, and they live in a hotel or an Airbnb for X, and then they can't afford that anymore, and they find themselves on the floor at Second Avenue Commons. But I would, I would certainly invite others to share if you see something different. You're with folks on the street more frequently than I am, for sure.
No, that's pretty accurate, but especially that we've seen a lot of women recently experiencing domestic violence and human trafficking. So that is also some of the sectors that we're seeing, particularly in the encampments around downtown and the north side. Additionally, we see some folks that I think it's challenging that are not part of our community, not part of the city, not part of Allegheny County, that come here because they're stranded here through the bus system or through the trains, who have no supports. And those are the most challenging people because we have to build a lot of information for them, and we have to make sure, like, what is the best fit for them. But we're seeing what you're mentioning, yeah. Not every, we're seeing a lot of kind of categorization of homeless as being one sector of people who are severely mentally ill and substance use, but I would say there's different populations. And I would say that that is the ones that might be more visible, but that doesn't mean that's the number, the majority.
So for the folks who are un-sheltered, who are like out on the street, is that population as mixed, or is that a more difficult pop, I mean, is there?
I think it is also as, like, just as mixed. Just in the last two weeks, our north side team, like Camila mentioned, we have like people that end up stranded in Pittsburgh. So just in the last two weeks, we've actually had two people reconnect with family out of the Pittsburgh area via Greyhound, and we work with some of our county outreach partners to be able to help with those Greyhound tickets. Actually, and as an example, you yourself had sent an email about some people in Squirrel Hill. And again, we reached out to county partners, and we discovered a couple there who's actually housed, and their case manager had been looking for them, and they were in the process of being exited because no one knew where they were. And because of this message, like, we really appreciate when people use 311 and people reach out to us, because sometimes we just simply don't know. There's only a limited amount of people on the street. So if we can keep connected with these people, we can reconnect them with family, connect with case management, make sure they are aware of the shelters that are in the system. So that's what outreach is doing for all these individuals we're talking about.
I would add also, we've been seeing more, because Pittsburgh is a point, there's a processing shelter, a processing center of undocumented immigrants in New York, and we are kind of the stop before they get sent to the, they're different places in the West. So we've been seeing more undocumented Hispanic, Latino, and Latina, Latinx populations. And we've actually had really great, great support from Casa San Jose, but a lot of them also have told us about positive experiences at 2AC since it reopened, and Light of Light for undocumented immigrants, that I think it's, it's a new, a new group that we are seeing.
And you may not have these numbers. Do we have any statistics of sort of like crime committed by people who are living on the street in any like way that we can, because, well, what I'm getting at is, you know, as I think we all know, we recently had a public hearing with some, I'll put it gently, with folks who have some preconceived ideas about what it means to be homeless and why people are homeless, and, you know, who homeless people are and what they are doing. So that's what I'm asking is just in terms of, you know, they sort of assume like if there's a crime committed downtown, it is, it was committed by a homeless person, right? When, and so I was just wondering if we do have any kind of information around that.
I'll start, and then please feel free. I mean, we absolutely can look at that, and I think actually there's a report on our website. I have to, I should, brought my computer up here, on people experiencing kind of street homelessness. And we can look at previous criminal justice system involvement. I'll generalize for a second without having that in front of me. I'll generalize for a second without having that in front of me, but I think, you know, there, it is hard, I think, to be homeless, and I, and I think there are crimes, there are charges that can be brought just in the, in the, in the course of trying to survive, right? So I think that is mostly what we see, right? Low-level, previous criminal justice system, but what we know we're seeing is significant victimization of those populations. And I think, I think, you know, folks aren't as, as aware, as aware of that, right? And Camila already mentioned trafficking and sex markets within those, those areas, as well as other predatory behavior, as well as, and I think you probably are referring to this, people, people's real anger towards this population and willing to express violence towards them. So I think, you know, it is much more the other way. I think there's a lot of national statistics on this as well, but we, in fact, absolutely can look at the, the previous kind of arrests of the people staying outside.
We had our analysts, data analysts in Public Safety, they were doing a mapping specifically of the downtown area with the growing insinuations that the homeless were responsible for crimes, and we can definitely send you that information over, but it actually showed what Director Dalton was saying, which is they are the victims of these crimes being committed. They're the, the, they were like five, they committed like maybe like 2% of the crimes, and they were like 90% of the victims in the crimes. Some of the people that come into our programs, like our diversion program, the crimes that you see people living outside commit are crimes of survival, so retail theft, possession, paraphernalia, being in front of a business and the business calling police and then trespass. Those types of crimes are what you tend to see, but violent crimes are, we haven't seen that connection. We do have people who are experiencing severe mental health, who are living on the streets, and sometimes in their psychosis, they might harm another person, but it's a, I would say it's an outlier. So, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and then I do think that that's, I mean, just for, for folks to understand the number of older people who are homeless, because there were a lot of old people, older seniors who came out to testify against, you know, about how, and, you know, I think it would be nice if we could have, you know, some, some type of, something that we could share with folks about, about the demographics of homelessness, right? Of the folks who are homeless, at least here in Allegheny County. So in terms of those counts, the, I think I saw, so in the county, the 2023 point in time was about 900, like, close to 1,000?
Yeah. Yeah, to be clear, that number is representing people who are, who are staying in shelter or, or in, or in unsheltered situations, so it's going to represent any given day.
Okay.
It's a, it's a, from the point in time count, it was 169 unsheltered. So the vast majority are sheltered.
So 169 countywide?
Yes. That was a code-
That are unsheltered?
That was, so that was last January, right? Again, we track this much more regularly and still find it to be around 200. That was a code blue day, so we were open at that point in time, if, maybe if, you know, I don't know, but, but just to give you that context, but, right, that's, that's unsheltered number. So when we're talking about homelessness, that's including the folks who are staying at Second Avenue Commons and at that code blue shelter that night. So when we're talking about 1,000, that's, that's who we're including, but 169 unsheltered.
So I guess I'm not tracking, so, so, so 800 sheltered in emergency shelter? And then 200 just not sheltered? Right, right. Okay. So, so we could say roughly 1,000 then? Who need housing? Right? Like more permanent housing? Okay. All right. So with the winter, with the, you know, the plan for the winter, so, okay, so I do have some questions about these shelters, because I've heard a lot about, you know, there's the issues of folks don't want to go in shelters, they don't feel safe, they don't have a place to put their stuff. That is a big one. So could you talk a little bit about how that is going to be different this year? For what, you know, what type of personal space people have in the shelters?
Sure, yeah, yeah. I mean, the vast majority of people who are staying in shelter, I think we have roughly 400 beds at any given time, of people who are staying in a year-round shelter, so they're, they're there and they're able to stay there year-round. What that means is that they have a kind of a dedicated spot for them each night. There are a few shelters that don't always have the ability for, for clients to stay inside during the day, but we've worked with, with them to kind of figure out a way for that to be possible this winter, so that them and their belongings are able to be at the shelter during the day. There are, there are then these overflow shelters, which we described, that, that are just seasonal, and we've been working with, with all the operators of those overflows to be able to find a way for, for the folks who are staying there to be able to come back the next day and be, ensure that they'll be able to stay there the next day, and keep some, some amount of belongings that they brought with them to be able to be there during the day, so that when they leave, perhaps in the morning to come to downtown or somewhere else that they might go, that when they return that night, that their belongings will be there.
Okay, so, so as, and I, and I see that more is opening up next week? Is it next week?
Tonight and, yeah.
Tonight and, so, so by, let's say the end of next week, how many total beds will we have?
So, so year-round beds, again, around about 400 beds, and then we have 105 additional overflow beds that have opened between last Friday and this coming Monday night.
Okay.
Then an additional approximately 100 that will open in early December for the North Side Shelter.
And those will be, those will be full year-round?
It's a winter shelter, that's at the North Side Partnership, it's dedicated for winter, so through, through mid-March or so. And so, so 400 beds year-round available for singles, and then we're adding 200 for this winter on top of that.
And 200, so-
205.
Okay, so for the winter, there will be a total, rough, you know,
605 or so, yeah.
Of six, okay, so roughly 600. Do we think that that is going to?
I'm sorry, just, just to be clear, because we talk about, so these are spaces for, for single individuals. Families with children are served and other shelters, that are not part of these numbers that we're sharing here. And we have several, I think we have six family shelters that serve households with children and, and an overflow program from there, so that, I believe, I believe, how many total spots? I don't have that number right now. We can get it, yeah.
So, and do we have, or, we don't have children who are sleeping out in tents at the moment?
No. So on the family side, if we run out of room in our, in our homeless shelter system, we have an overflow program that does include motels when we have to, right? So there, there should never, if anyone knows of children staying outside, please work with them to let us know, or let us know, and we'll reach out to them. No families with children should be staying outside ever. Of course, no people should be staying outside ever, but we will always find space on, on the family side. And I think, you know, as Andy said, we, we've got some flex in, in the, in the current structure, too. The North Side has additional capacity. If the code blue numbers are similar, you know, from last year are similar to this year, then we won't need to flex beyond, because we've, we've certainly opened more beds, but if we do, we'll, we'll keep watching that. And nobody at DHS wants people to run their lives figuring out where they're going to sleep at night, right? We want people to be able to come back to that space. We want people to be able to leave, you know, a reasonable amount of belongings, and we want people to be able to then work with us and others to, to be able to get the services, supports, other housing job, so that they can, they can move on. So that's what the work that Andy and team have been doing with the shelter system to really more accommodate people to be able to, again, not run their lives waiting in line for a shelter, for a shelter bed. Some of the, just the physical plans just make it hard, right? So like, think about Second Avenue Commons, people are staying tonight where they're going to serve food the next day. And so, you know, there is some transition that has to happen in that space, but people are then able to stay, and they're, they can go upstairs to the engagement center and stay there during the day as well.
Okay. So, okay, so looking, so, so, so right now, do we feel that with, with these 600 beds, emergency beds, is that, is that going to be enough for, for everybody, at least that we know of right now, that is sleeping outside?
Yes, those numbers add up. However, we'll continue to watch it. As I said, there's, you know, there's, there's, it is not, you know, there's tens of thousands of people who are housing insecure in this, in this community, and so it, we just have to continue to watch it all the time, right? And we will. So, yes, the numbers add up, but that doesn't mean that, that it'll hold, right? And so we'll, we'll continue to watch. And, and our partners at the North Side Partnership Project, that, that, that building has considerable space, as long as we're able to staff it, I think we'd be able to support people there. If not, we would turn to our partners at the city and think about other, other additional options, like we did last year.
And, and you said that roughly 15, sorry, 50% of the folks who are in the shelter are out within two weeks? So they're just looking, like, they just want to get out and figure something out, either through you or, or on their own? Okay, so that's sort of, and that, I assume, is part of the turnaround?
Yeah.
Okay. Within the shelter, and I get it, sorry, I was like-
Let me just give you an example, but just for, you know, the, you know, horrible fire at Second Avenue Commons, folks, you know, went to the convention center and then to Reed's Dale. The folks that went back to Second Avenue Commons, the vast majority of them are not the same people that were there in June. They're, they're, it is not a static population, it turns over, yeah, it's great, yeah, just as an example.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I sort of say that to highlight this, you know, this notion that people want, you know, they don't want to shut, like, people do want shelter, they do, for the most part, right? I mean, I'm sure there's a handful of folks who, you know, have issued, but at any rate. So within, in these shelters themselves, so there's a place that they can put a certain amount of stuff, is there any way for folks to, I mean, again, I'm just sort of like, to picture it, like, how much space do they have between cots? And like, what's it kind of look like?
Yeah, and I think, I mean, every place is a little bit different, so, I mean, we're grateful to the partners because they're, these overflows are, like Erin mentioned, they're happening in rooms that are otherwise used for conference rooms or cafetiers during the day, so there's, every space looks a little, a little bit different. Generally, it's cots that are, you know, a few feet apart, and some plastic storage bins that, that can contain the things that people bring and want to leave.
Okay. Is there, is there option for, like, to separate men and women, or to allow couples to stay together if they want to stay, couples or small groups?
Yeah, I mean, you know, you saw, you saw the numbers, mentioned 105 beds, so Salvation Army, for example, and East Liberty, that shelter is just dedicated to, to women, so it'll just be women there. Light of Life has 25 spots, 20 will be for men, only five for women, so they will separate out. Yeah, so, and then other overflows sort of can take both men and women. The winter shelter, like we did last year at Ammon, has the ability to separate out people, but also create space where if someone doesn't identify as male or female, or there are couples or whatnot, that they can be sort of accommodated in that way.
Okay. And then, okay, so that, so I actually have questions about, okay, so, so do we feel that sort of, so, so this winter, we have this plan, we're hoping to get people off of this, off of the street, right? People who are sleeping outside. Do, what happens after the winter? Like, do they come back onto the, I mean, I think that's sort of what people, you know, the general public would like to, would like to know about.
Absolutely. I, I think, I think it's our job, as we move people inside, to do the kind of person-by-person planning such that they, they are in our formal shelter, our year-round shelter system, or are in housing, right? So I think as we move folks inside, that's where the real work goes, belongs, is person-by-person planning to make sure that there's space. I think there's no reason to think there wouldn't be space for people within the shelter and housing system, in part because of the success we're having on the 500 and 500 initiative, in part because, as we've kind of just talked about, there is a lot of turnover in the system. If, you know, if we want to hold beds for people, let's say we have 30 people staying at the North Side Partnership Project, and we want to hold beds for them in the continuum of year-round shelter, such that they get into that, those spaces in three weeks or something, I think we can do that, right? We can move these folks through the system. Plus, with 500 and 500, we've just got a lot of additional units coming online that will allow us to house people from the shelter system in those units, creating much more space within the shelter system. So if we do that work, and if people will, will accept those offers, there's no reason to believe we cannot move all those folks through the system and not have folks return to out, you know, to staying outside in the summer. But it's work to do.
So, so that's going to bring me, and this may be, we may want to wait and like do this as a separate, but that, that brings me over to our Public Safety folks, about what, how is that going to work? You know what I mean? Like, once we get to a place where we can say, you know, we have shelter for you, we have a place for you to stay, you know? I don't know if you want to answer that now, or?
Yeah, we can talk from the perspective of OCHS, and then Director Schmidt can talk about more about the active steps. But from OCHS, we, what we've been doing through co-response, and Ben can add more about Roots, but specifically in the areas where we see more people, like a higher number, having conversations about these winter shelters and the availability and what would they need to move to that area. And then Roots, which I would like Ben to talk more about, but they're, every day they're doing outreach, and they actually are in a provider meeting with the county where they get all these, they not only share information, but get all these numbers. And I think Ben brought some amazing numbers about just like the work that those teams do on a day-to-day. So what we will be doing is outreach, ensuring that people know what is available, making sure we connect with our county partners to get those spaces available. But additionally, we also have already preemptively bought basic need things to support the population who are living outside and are not ready necessarily today for shelter. We got blankets, socks, all the heaters, different basic needs. I know Roots is getting some boots, but we are prepared always for the winter, and like, these conversations never stop. The positive thing is we, we have this collaboration. I think those calls happen almost every day to talk about case conferencing, about the people who are in the most need, who are living outside.
Yeah, I can give a little more specifics to that. So like Camila said, and I actually also emailed this to you recently, like whether winter, summer, spring, fall, like, we're, these, these conversations around shelter are not stopping ever. We are continuing to try to encourage people into shelter, talk about the different options. More recently, the outreach teams have actually been meeting, like Camila said, almost daily at this point. We have a weekly large provider call that encompasses like everybody in the county that we know of. We also have some more targeted calls around some of these high-need areas, or like the high, the more population-dense areas, like, we have a meeting specifically about the trails, and we're now keeping track of who we know are on those trails and exactly what shelters they are and aren't interested in. That way, when we know, when there's a bed open at one of these shelters, we can target the people we already know that are interested in that space. So I met with the North Side team this morning, and I had my notes from when I was talking to them, they gave some great information. Just since September 10th, they've, they've gotten 24 people into shelters, and like, with, this was pre-overflow openings, so that is pretty huge, because as you guys have been questioning, like, it's, it can be a little difficult whenever the beds are full all the time. They had also, this is maybe less important to the housing piece, but also extremely important, they got 46 people into the North Side Suboxone Clinic, which is where our program started with, with the Center for Inclusion Health. That is also just enormous, and those are all people just from the North Side area, particularly, I believe almost all those people were directly from the trails. But as Erin said, it's not static. It's not like we took now 24 people into shelter off the trail, doesn't mean there's now 24 people less on the trail. Those spaces are just filled up with other people that needed a spot to stay. And in terms of winter preparation, we just got through a county partner, Bridge Outreach, I believe it was the McMurray Rotary Club donated 600 pairs of boots. We got 300 donated last week, we have another 300, and they actually emailed me while we're sitting here, 300 confirmed delivered next week. And one of our partners at University of Pitt, and one of the professors out there is also privately funding additional boots on top of that, once we run through this, this group. of, this delivery. And like Camila said, we're partnering with some other organizations and purchasing out of our own budget some of these other winter supplies. We just ordered a bunch of thermals, hats, gloves. About several years ago, we partnered with Animal Friends, which surprises some people, they get probably more blanket donations than any human shelter in this county, so they've donated hundreds of blankets to us. Previous winters, they just dropped off a massive donation to our Northside site, and they started distributing earlier this week.
Okay, all right, oh.
Just to add that additionally from Roots, the post team and the co-response team are doing outreach in the community, so there might be areas where Roots is not at, that we can still touch, to make sure that people know, and then they bring all the information to make sure that we match people.
Okay, I, I'll leave it at, because it does sound like we have a, a plan for the winter, and that's good, but I do, I, I feel like I would be remiss, because I don't, well, I'm highly critical of much of the vitriol that we heard the other night at the public hearing. I, I would be remiss if I didn't also say that there are plenty of folks around the city who are empathetic, who, you know, understand, but at the same time, are public spaces, like our, our bike trails, our riverfront trails, whatever, you know what I mean, that they, that, that we all want to use and enjoy. So maybe, and I know Councilman Coghill, Councilwoman Gross are very interested in this as well, is if, you know, if we don't, you know, what the plan is, you know, if people are outside, is there somewhere specific that they can be outside in order to keep those public, those sort of communal public spaces available for, for everyone? Again, I don't know if that, that doesn't sound like that plan is necessarily ready yet, but I think it's something that we should probably think about come spring, right?
I do want to add something to that, so, I mean, I, we focus so much on downtown over this last year, I think some of that has already started. So we work very closely with all, I mean, all of the commanders, but with downtown, we talked about the jail trail, everybody knows there are a lot of tents down there. We had a few issues down there, and when we started working with police, they increased patrols down there. Because of that area being so large, I think almost every outreach provider at this point is down there almost every single day. We have been rotating through a bunch of different people, both getting into Second Avenue Commons when they reopen, getting into the other shelters, we've had several people that have since been housed in that area. So I do think there's some really great public safety collaboration happening on the safety aspect, and we've started having those conversations around the safety aspect of the Northside Trail as well.
Yeah, and I think that, a lot, but, but again, I mean, I, I, you know, the Eliza Furnace Trail is actually a good example of a spa, at least, well, I should say, I go through the, where, where it is a public space, but it's not a place where people are like, "Oh, I'm going to hang," you know what I mean? Like, I mean, yes, you ride your bike through there for like a second, but it's not like a, a public space where you're kind of gathering, or, 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 you know, and it is a great example of how we have been able to maintain a space relatively clean, right? Like, relatively safe for the people who are living there, and maybe if we had designated, other designated spaces like that.
It's, that's, it's completely true, and if we have space in our housing system, we should encourage people to come inside, right? I mean, not just for the neighbors who are empathetic and care about those folks, but want to see public spaces used differently, but for the people themselves, who we just said are being victimized regularly by those environments, right? And so as we have space in, in our system, we should, we should make sure those are the folks we are using that space on. It's my opinion.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, I, I will leave it at that, I'll let my colleagues, I have, I've gone on for a long time, so, thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mark, Councilwoman Coghill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome, Erin, Ben, Camila, Andy, Andy, great. So, let me just start with this. Okay, so who, who puts that on, where do you put it on?
Yep, that's the Department of Human Services, there's a QR code there, it links to our website, so it's on, it's on, it's on something called, we call Connect, that helps you to find all kinds of services.
You get this to the encampments everywhere?
We do, we do. Ben can speak to that.
Yeah, there's, so we have them hanging in all of the Roots hubs, and DHS also has a daily shelter list that not only all of the homeless outreach providers on, the shelter providers are on, I believe the hospital, social workers are on, so that list actually comes out every day.
No, I, I really like it, I mean, if we can get this in the hands of the people out there that possibly need it, so it is being distributed throughout our homeless population.
And I, I would say if you have one place to tell people to go, I would say that they should go to Second Avenue Commons, and then we can direct them from there. So if, if you don't have this on you, and you don't have your phone, and somebody has a question, people can go to Second Avenue Commons.
It's funny, if you don't have your phone, do you find that most of the unhoused have phones?
I would say most of the homeless population have paperweights. They, it is very diff, it is very difficult to keep them charged. We used to actually have a, a church group that provided like solar lanterns, but they didn't charge very well. People get, they get waterlogged, they break, they get lost, they get stolen. It's really difficult to keep working phones in the hands of people.
Yeah, understood, you know, and that's why I'm glad to see addresses on here and things of that nature, the cue card code, what, what do you call that? QR code? That's like, I mean, that's no good if you don't have a phone, correct? Okay, good, good, good. So I noticed these, and Erin, let me ask you this, you know, I know things have been going better, meaning beds opening up. I think we were talking to Jake Pollock the other day, and he had mentioned, and I just want to make sure this was accurate, we had an average of one to two a day opening up a few years ago, and now we have five to seven.
You mean, housing opening up?
Well, I don't know exactly what type of beds he was talking about, I guess, shelter space, or however you define a shelter, I guess, or, these are not, I don't think this is bridge housing, I thought maybe this was just emergency, kind of like Second Avenue Common, or, you know, Salvation Army-type places.
Yeah, it, it is a peculiar, like, a bit of a peculiar thing about the shelter system. It, it will generally always be close to full, right? I think because there are just so many housing insecure folks, but again, the important thing is, is maybe not that there are spaces for people in the shelter system, but that we are getting people where they need to go quickly, right? And so that is where we're starting to see some progress, right? We've been working, you know, in the 500 and 500 area with the housing authorities, we've got thirty-five additional units coming on from the County Housing Authority in the next couple of weeks, due to the significant work of Councilmember Gross and others. We've got the Bridge Housing Program in Stanton Heights, that another, we've got, we've got thirteen or so folks in there, and another forty spaces opening up as they finish that. So we're, we're starting to see really some movement and flow, we've got private landlords willing to support this population, and, and then again, if you've got a number of people who have come in, let's say, from the Northside Trails up to one of our overflow shelters, we can get them into the year-round shelter program, into housing and so on. So that flow is really important, so we are starting to see that.
You had mentioned you, additional space that you have pursued but have not been successful at, is that kind of relate to what happened to us in Carrick, is that what you mean? Just kind of...
At least one of the spots, that's right.
Sure, right, yeah. But the spaces you are finding, they're already kind of operating, they're not, these are not new spaces, I know you have some new things going on.
We have some new things going on, but right, we've, we've asked, there's a, there is a benefit of use, of course, having some other spaces would have been helpful, but there is a benefit of using our existing shelter system, meaning if you're staying in overflow at Light of Life, and a bed opens up, as they will at Light of Life, and you want to stay there, then you just stay there, right? So there's, and there's other services and supports there already, so I think there is some benefit to just like pushing the rest of our system to do a little more, but, you know, there's, there are limits to that, of course.
You know the extensive work that this council has done in, you know, this field, and what, would you, would you say the single-room occupancy or bridge housing is the main need right now? It seems like your shelter spaces are opening up for you, but it's really that transitional interim type of bridge housing that we need help, is, is that, is that accurate?
We need a bunch of things, I would look at Andy as well, I think we're working on more facility-based, permanent supportive housing, so not to be in the weeds about this, but that's for the highly vulnerable folks. The vast majority of our system is scattered site, we think we could do a little bit better for folks with some more facility-based, permanent supportive housing, so we're working on that, we've got a grant about to go into HUD around that. I think the bridge housing is helpful, those folks are technically still considered homeless, which is, again, okay with me, as long as we're using that time to move people into, into housing. So ultimately, we need more truly just affordable, deeply affordable subsidized housing that we've been able to create with 500 and 500. The voucher system is working, the city, the city housing authority has been a tremendous partner in helping to bring vouchers to those folks, so we can get people in private, private housing. They're even picking up because the County Housing Authority doesn't have voucher authority right now, right? So they're helping to, they're giving us those vouchers and porting them, so that stuff's working. The bridge is really important, because it is some additional time to help people to get stabilized and into affordable housing, but ultimately, we just need more deeply, deeply affordable and subsidized housing for folks.
Yep, yep. How many tents are out there?
I mean, our, well, the count on tents as of this week was a hundred and, or ninety-nine? Ninety-nine? Of course, we're not counting everything.
How many locations has that broken into? Four? I know the jail trail, I know the Allegheny Trail, I know Southside, what, where else? West End Bridge?
I, I think the route generally is from sort of Thirty-first Street Bridge towards West End Bridge, and then Eliza Furnace Trail, past the jail a bit, and then the South Side, roughly from Smithfield Street out to, um, Cott Middle Bridge.
And, and I, I'm glad to hear you say that's, you know, we could count, like you said, a lot of people are vulnerable, ten thousand, I think you said, over or so in the county, which is, it's realistic, I know. But, but I'm glad you're focusing on the most at need, the people are sleeping in a tent, that's what I judge success by, I will tell you. You know, we have beds opening up, and I know there's different issues that come up, sometimes people don't want to go to a shelter, they don't trust a shelter space, so my goal is to get all the tents off the trail, you know, and of course, to find them a place to go, so, you think that's achievable?
I think it's fair to hold the system accountable to the, to the people staying outside, right? Because, again, we've already talked about the victimization and harm that we may be putting people in, in those spaces, and then it is, it's, it's a challenge, right? It's trust in the system, and, and I think, you know, it, I mean, Ben and others can speak to this, but I think it's just changed over the past couple of years, as people have become accustomed to those spaces being there for longer periods of time. But if we've got shelter, space in the shelter system and room for folks, I think we should be, we should really be working together to encourage people to take up that housing.
Just going to add real quick, that I, I think it, we know that one solution won't work for every person, and so not everybody's going to want to go to a congregate shelter, and so we have a mix of congregate shelter and shelter where individuals have NSRO, they have, they have a room, or there may be a few people to a room, and there's a collaborative process that the county and the city and other outreach partners that are working closely with those folks every day, who know that some of the barriers that they might have to getting into congregate shelter, work to prioritize those folks together, so recognizing that there's a lot of different strategies around types of shelter that will work for people, and we've invested in, in those.
How long have you been with DHS, Andy?
Nearly ten years.
Okay, I was going to say, you seem like you know your stuff. It's good, yeah. The Homeless Advisory Board, who do they advise? You?
I'm going to go ahead and answer that, I mean, it's, it's, it's the whole continuum of care and our HUD funding, really, yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, to, to receive HUD funding as a COC, there, there, there's a board, and they, they advise, they advise the system.
Because you're required to have the board in order to receive the funding, okay.
That's right, that's right, yeah. It's, it's, it's meant to be a collaborative process.
Got it, so, and again, what is, what do they, who do they ultimately advise?
Well, I mean, they, they're, they, they collaborate to advise on, on funding recommendations to HUD, for example, as, as we submit proposals to HUD every year for funding for these permanent housing programs, they had, they had, they make decisions around who those projects should be, and, and other, other policies.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not on the HAB, and you, you heard Andy say, we, we are designated as a particular partner in the funding, and I, I would, it's not really asked, but this is benefiting this community, and that DHS is putting way more money into the homeless housing system than a, like, if a nonprofit had that designation that they could ever put in, because we see the challenges, and we, so we are able to move money from other places and into supporting this population. But we also have like subcommittees, like, like the, like the street, I don't know what's called, the HOC, the, what does it stand for?
Homeless Outreach Coordinating Committee.
Okay, sorry, the HOC, which is the Homeless Outreach Coordinating Committee, that we do talk to, that the city talks to around issues with encampments, that we, that I present to the whole HAB, at least Executive Committee, often about our shelter plans, so they are advising DHS, they are questioning DHS, they are advising the city from time to time, and probably questioning the city as well from time to time. So I think they take their role really seriously, the Executive Committee is very involved, and they have, they've written letters in support of, letters against actions we have taken, and so they're, they have some independence, but they're certainly part of the system that, you know, both is able to get that HUD funding, and also how we spend that HUD funding.
Thanks. Camila, I just wanted to ask you a question, which was brought up earlier at our meeting, and I just wanted to give your thoughts, and your thoughts on it, Erin, is I think most of us council members support, you know, the good work that you've been doing, I would say, right? We see you're growing, we obviously have a need for the social workers for many different reasons, particularly though around mental illness, homelessness, and drug addiction. So Ms. Pittinger brought up, she said she thought that should be, you know, financed by the county, right? I mean, because it's typically a county function. I like that we're taking matters in our own hands in the city for, for that, for those purposes, but your funding all comes from city taxpayer dollars, correct?
No, not all funding. Part of a funding does come from the Stop the Violence Grant Fund, but the diversion program, the post program, comes from federal funding that we were able to secure, and state funding as well. And we've had conversations with Director Dalton and her staff that are interested in funding our programs. We've had already initial conversations regarding the post overdose team, so that we could receive some funding, and the diversion team for, from opioid settlement fund, and...
Yeah, a lot of different streams.
Yes, we, we go for every grant we see out there.
Let me go back to that part where you said Ms. Dalton was willing and able, and talking about funding some of that.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think it's a good point, right? While the city does receive, and I don't know all of the funding streams that the city receives, some dollars that can be used for these purposes. The county is the Human Services Department for the whole county, which includes, of course, the city, and we take the city extremely seriously in our work, and if we have great providers that are being, that are doing the work, that are part of city government, we should be, we should be covering that.
So essentially, we are a provider now.
You are. And I think, you know, we've also had really productive conversations about billing in the Medicaid system, and so I think absolutely as these teams have grown and have become primary providers in this space, we, we absolutely look to partner with the best providers, and so we see that, as, as you do, and, you know, are working, working with the city on it.
Great. Well, I'm not going to belabor the homeless issues, you know, I, I wish to continue our conversations as we've done in the past, you know, I want to thank you for meeting with us on many occasions, and our ideas, and pursuing our ideas. You may have heard, we pulled out and passed, we're hopefully going to be passing legislation to make it easier to have those options for you in and around town, and all through the city, really, but, but mainly, I think it'll alleviate the fact that you have to go into neighborhoods and actually try to sell it to the neighborhood, which we find very difficult, for, whether right or wrong reasons, difficult, so. Okay, that's it for me, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to acknowledge that Councilwoman, Council President Emeritus, Kayla Smith, has joined, but Councilwoman Wilson is, is next, if you've got some questions.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman. I can't remember if we call you chair in this moment. Thank you all for being here. I just wanted to say that it probably feels like Groundhog Day for some of you. I know, Erin, it feels like we were having this conversation in 2021, and then we're back at the table having the same conversation. But thank you for the work that you've done. You know, very appreciative of how you all manage the, the beds and make sure that spaces are available. So I just had some specific questions to the presentation that I jotted down here. And then I just had some, some overall just thoughts about what's going on. So what I had was that you had a slide that said that the total capacity is six hundred, but the count says that there's nine hundred.
Yeah, so the, the six hundred number represents the, yeah, the number of beds for single individuals. The nine hundred, it's actually the total of those who are unsheltered, which was the one hundred and sixty-nine plus the seven hundred and fifty-eight. And that seven, I think it was seven hundred and fifty-eight, includes both families and singles. So all I have to say, the six hundred number does not include the number of beds for family shelter. We, we kind of think of them, think of them a little bit separately, and so I can understand how that's confusing.
And there's also the slide, and Erin, thank you for previously sharing this. It wasn't a slide you shared, but it was a, I asked what the count was, maybe a month ago. Let me just look at this. There's one, one line, I don't see it here. I thought it was here. There's one line where it said like, you combine like shelter and unsheltered, oh, total. Oh, that's the total line. Sorry, I looked at that quickly. Forget I even mentioned that. And the other one was, you mentioned how people are unlikely, some people are unlikely to be involved in the COC. Are you talking about just like the, the link, like the count, like when they get registered to eventually get housed? Is that what you're referring to? Sorry, I didn't jot down what, it's on a slide, it says, some people are unlikely to wanna be involved with the COC. I mean, I imagine you're talking about people who are in shelter and, like, for instance, I guess we're just curious. I'll just ask the question. Is there, so there's situations where people are in the shelter and then they don't wanna sign up to the link?
I mean, we can, we can probably all jump in here. I mean, housing's obviously voluntary, right? And so people have to, have to want it. And it, and we face challenges actually at, at all the levels. We know we face challenges in encouraging people to come inside into shelter. We also actually face challenges having people leave shelter and go into other housing options. Even if, like, for me, they seem like much better, like, why would, you know, why would that not be something you'd wanna see? And so it is, you know, sort of incumbent both upon us to understand their situation and offer things that work, but also to hold some ground to say that, okay, we're gonna offer you a couple of things, let's say you're in shelter, but you can't stay here either, right? And so people have to have a plan to go into housing, go back to family, take one of the offers that we're providing to them, or else they're really using an emergency resource that we need for other folks. And so I think it is both incumbent on us to understand people's situation, to have housing options that work for them, but then also to acknowledge that you cannot live in, you know, you can't live in shelter. And so that's, that's not something we want to be doing on the regular basis. We wanna get people where they wanna go, but it also has to be a standard that we hold. I don't know if that answered your question.
What percent do you think?
I don't know. Obviously, there's like, you know, when fifty percent of people still leave the shelter system within fourteen days, there's people that are highly motivated. And there are people who would, would probably live in Second Avenue Commons. They would probably live in Second Avenue Commons, you know, for the rest of their lives if they could, right? So anyway, I don't know. I don't have a percentage, yeah.
I appreciate it. I'm sure it's, I'm sure there's, I mean, there's some people you can't even get to come into the shelter, so. All right, the Light of Life beds, can you walk me through that? Cause and there were some other groups out there, like East End, Cooperative Ministries. Can you just walk me through like, those beds or those, I mean, my understanding of, you know, some shelters that there are barriers to get in and it's just hard to get into. So how do you all figure out the funds? Cause I understand like COC funds, like, you know, they have to go towards a bed that I think that don't, that doesn't have barriers.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll start and I'll let Andy jump in. He's, he works with the shelters all the time. From my perspective, it's actually pretty good to have a continuum of options. What is safe for me might not be what's safe for Ben. And so as long as people are not discriminating against people, people are, you know, our shelter system is offering, you know, standard of, of care, that there can be different types of approaches to, to housing by these different shelter providers. So there is, I think, variation in our shelter system on, on what it feels like to be there, even if we say they operate by the same rules, right? So, you know, Light of Life might operate under a certain set of what are like kind of group norms, where certain people feel safe and other people don't. And our other shelter systems, including, you know, the shelter system will help to support on the North Side, might look, might look different. And so I think it is, though, helpful. I get, I get calls from people who say, you know, it, it's not safe for me because there, we see that people are, you know, still using drugs or have serious mental illness that's not being treated. That's not a safe environment for me. And so having options across the continuum, I think, is, is helpful. But Andy, I don't know if you wanted to kind of run through the, I don't know, Light of Life in particular or some of the other shelters and, you know, the, the rules that we apply and.
Yeah, I mean, I'd say, I think it's fair to say that we, our desire is for all of the shelters in the system to operate as low barrier, that, that, that folks are able to access, that there's not barriers to, to entry there. So we take that really seriously. And in fact, this morning, we have this sort of ongoing, we call it Shelter Community Practice, which is essentially bringing all of the operators of the shelters together and meeting regularly. So we met this morning out at East End Cooperative Ministry to talk through, what's a termination from a shelter? How do these things work? How can we, how can we build consistency in how these services work? And, and, and so, yeah, we take that really seriously. We, we have standards that we communicate to the shelters around these things and we, we monitor them. So we go out every year and, and do monitoring. We, as complaints come in from people who may use shelter, those come to the Director's Action Line at DHS and we investigate those. We talked about accountability and transparency in the HAB. And so part of the HAB is committees who are, include advocates and folks who, who work closely with people and, and, and see things that perhaps can be improved. And so they, they reach out to us and we're, part of, part of the work we did this morning was to kind of respond and see, like, how can we incorporate a lot of this feedback? So, yeah, it's a continual process of like improving quality of care, improving that so that everybody can have a, can have a, a standard experience across the system.
All right, thanks.
Can I add something to that from the city side? The, also the HUD funding that goes to some of these shelters. We have been invited by the city now, Ben and I, to actually evaluate. And so what we've done is we actually have made a list of barriers that we're seeing in the shelter systems for our own participants who, those barriers shouldn't be there because they're supposed to be low barrier. And so we actually had really good conversations and we actually sent them a list of all the things that we're seeing in the field that are causing a barrier for people to feel safe to come into those shelters. And before, those conversations didn't occur. It was just evaluating by people in finance and budget and saying, yes, this goes to this, this goes to that. So I think that being able to participate in these spaces where we have the actual data of what's happening in the street, it's gonna be helpful to also hold those providers accountable with city funding.
Thanks. I'll jump to the five hundred, five hundred. Is that, can you just loosely explain that and help me understand? So this is locating five hundred, identifying five hundred spaces that will coordinate with essentially DHS to move people into stable housing, right? Okay, how many, so not new builds, but how many, I mean, like that out, it's mostly outreach to landlords, to existing landlords to figure out who's gonna work with you? Is that true?
Yeah, it's a combination, right? So, and actually, I mean, if you've got the slides there, I don't know. So, you know, about twenty percent of the plan is, is housing authority units that should be. We just need to really work closely with them, use for people exiting homelessness. So that's, those are, that's a list that comes over every single week. We get units as they open up and we are placing our folks in them. The private developer units is another key piece, right? And the, the county and the city are working closely together on this. It's both developers who want to and landlords, property managers who wanna provide these spaces. But it's also using the leverage of our gap financing in the future to say, we, we want you to set aside. We would urge you to consider setting aside ten percent of your units in the future or of your, of your whole group of existing units to, to this population. You know, another key piece is going to be larger scale conversions, right? We've, we've talked about the nursing home on Stan, in Stan Heights, that's bridge housing. But, you know, ultimately moving those folks into, into, into full, you know, permanent housing, but also other nursing home, hotel conversions that can be deeply affordable housing. So we think we need a project or two like that in order to get to five hundred. But most everything else is just kind of the hard slog of getting people to say, not, not, not give it their entire building over to people exiting homelessness, but ten percent, fifteen percent, give us some units and, and we'll provide the support that folks need to be successful there.
Would the Fair Housing Amendments that were sent over to planning, would they assist in your, you know, assist in housing people?
And I should.
I'm sorry, are you familiar with that?
I mean, I probably am, but I should probably ask you to be more specific, just so I make sure I'm covering the right stuff.
I'm not the expert on the bill, but my understanding, someone can correct me if I'm wrong here, is that the, the bill that was approved, the planning, one of the bills in the package would make it so that group home, up to ten people would be, you know, by, by right in any, any place in the city and that the, you know, basically homelessness would also be a disability? I mean, the, the terms were reorganized, so I don't fully understand, but.
In broad strokes, it would be, in broad strokes, it would be helpful to us for, to not have to go through a full.
I'm sorry, it's like, not the homelessness disability, but most likely there could be, in that population, there could be.
Other disabilities that would qualify.
Other disabilities that are gonna qualify.
Yeah, right. In general strokes, it would, it would be easier for us for, for units that were used in a pretty similar manner in the past to be continued to used in, in that matter with, with slight modifications. So if we don't have to go through a full process for that, yes, that would help us for sure.
So up to ten people, do you typically, you know, need a provider to be? I mean, would COC dollars go to those, those units?
It depends, it just depends on the use case. COC dollars are typically used for the kind of rapid and permanent supportive housing. We're using other DHS dollars for, whether it be bridge housing or, you know, and something that is just deeply affordable, it's typically vouchers paired with our services.
Would homes like that typically have, would they be required to have a provider?
I think it just depends, I think it just depends on the, on the situation. When I, you know, I'll look at Andy too. When I think about our, that, that, that size of unit, yes, typically I think of them as having, having support. But it wouldn't necessarily, if it was really just deeply affordable, could be someone who's checking in with folks regularly, but not also, but not staying there. So I, I, I'm not maybe fully answering your question, but I think it would depend on the situation.
I know that I'm taking up a lot of time. I just wanna ask this winter shelter at NPP. It does say here, let me see, it says support oversight by DHS. Who's the, so my question is, who will be the provider here?
On the, so you know, the space is held by North Side Partnership Project. And then the staffing is done by, will be done by a group called Community Family Advocates. There really is staffing contractor of DHS. So we will have hands-on kind of support and understanding of what's going on in those, in that space.
Where else do they operate?
I mean, it's, again, it's sort of more of a staffing support for DHS. So we have those staff doing all kinds of different jobs. But what you should hear in that, I think, is that we'll be, we'll be very much involved in, in what's happening there.
Okay. And then I said I had some thoughts that I was gonna talk about, I was gonna mention. So I'll just state that, you know, I think that there is a good amount, was that, is that a good, good joke? That I have just a general take on representing an area that not only provides, I mean, you know, provide shelter. People are on board, community is on board for, you know, trying to help out when it makes sense, you know? In terms of, we have long, for a long, I mean, the first Roots office was previously called AHN. Well, I guess it was always Roots, but, you know, it did say AHN on the front of it for some time. That that, you know, that did happen on the north, on the East Ohio Street. I don't know, did it happen before downtown?
They were, they were within weeks of each other, so it was, it was pretty close.
Yeah, so I think it was just a moment where like, you know, it was presented to the community and we were very much, you know, trying to move in that direction of, of getting it done, you know? And everyone looked outside and thought, you know, thought, okay, this is what, what we should do. And so that continually be, that continually becomes the case. And I think it's just, from my understanding from the residents that I hear from business owners, you know, it's not this sense of that there is this like, you know, really, like, like a big, like, all the crime you mentioned. You said you did this study of the crime, and you're like, well, it's not really coming from this population, right? You mentioned that, but downtown. And, and quite frankly, I'm sure you could pick through the numbers, but I think people, when they look at people outside, and sure, it's not everyone, but certain individuals, are going through a lot and it's, it's a huge undertaking of the community, the business community to, you know, deal with what comes with that, you know, with the, the petty theft or different theft here and there. And, you know, I mean, I could cite cases that do revert back to, I mean, that's one of the things that's in the policy. If a camp becomes unruly, I don't know the exact terms, but, you know, if there is a large amount of drugs that are being taken from the site, if there's a large amount of, you know, drug use or there's theft that we know about, like, that's how some camp, or there's crime that's happening within the camp, some of the encampments close up because of that. And that's just a fact of the matter. So, you know, it's difficult to also have the conversation with the community when we always just like play the tune of, look, these aren't the people, there are people who are, you know, people outside are, are, they're the ones that are being harmed. The community, you know, although they understand, they wanna, they wanna be a part of it. They wanna, you know, they wanna be a part of the solution, but they also just need to find a way to coexist with what's happening. And so after my time of, you know, being on council and, and trying to work through some of these issues, we've just come to a point where then our one thing we have to do is figure out how we're gonna coexist. And so that means where these public spaces are that encampments can't be, you know, where, how city council can be helpful in terms of, you know, whether it is different, you know, something we have to bring into code to make sure that, you know, we do have a level-headed understanding of what's gonna happen with how we're gonna coexist. And so I, I wanna be a partner in that. I know this is about the, the winter plan, but I just wanna say that, you know, as we find ways to move people inside, work with shelters that don't have barriers, and then work with people upstream that, you know, could the five hundred, five hundred get to people? And we also just need to continually focus on, you know, not losing people that have, have, they, they wanna be a part of the community, that have, you know, they're residents too, they've been living here and they wanna see their community thrive. And unfortunately, there are many cases where it does pull down main streets and community. So, you know, just wanted to make that. you know, just wanted to make that, just wanna state that. So I mean, there is a, there was a side of me going back three years ago that was like, let's get the data, let's prove that it's true that there is not crime happening coming from the population. Let's push back on the community. I was definitely a part of moving that direction, like let's, let's be so proactive in just talking about this community. But there are so many challenges with, with homelessness that it's only natural for us then to come to a point, where a lot of people have just had enough of looking outside and seeing the worst of what can happen when you're, when you are homeless for over a year and a half waiting to get inside to stable housing. So there's no solution that we're gonna come up with right here at this table. It's just that I'm saying I'm willing to continue to be, you know, a partner in trying to make this work, whatever that looks like, but I, I think it is, it is definitely a balance. And after, after, you know, five years of hearing, uh, the, the similar complaints over and over again. So wanna be mindful of, of, uh, obviously, you know, what people are going through, but we have to find a way to coexist.
I, I was just gonna, I mean, thank you for your support and, um, I think, you know, at least when we started working together on this, we just, we didn't have the housing resources to provide to people. And then when you don't have that, we've got to find, we had to find a way to, um, support people differently. But now that we are bringing on those housing, those housing and shelter resources, I think it is a different day and a different conversation.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I really appreciate this opportunity to hear more in depth how much you all are doing. And I hope that the public is happy to hear that as well. And I'm, I'm trying to compare previous years, as Councilman Wilson was saying, that we have been here and talked about homelessness, and it just seems like there's so much more capacity added in the system. Does it feel that way to you? Right? In your continuum of care, right? We are calling it the shelter system. There is a lot more.
There, there is more capacity than there has yet. It has been, has been increased for sure.
Right.
I could say more about that.
Yeah, so let me, let me start, cause that might be the more official way, so then I can get kinda to my questions, because I have described the system this way in the past, kind of like if we go back three years or so, and, um, I, we really started hearing testimony and questions from the public. And I said at the time, you know, I am, I am ashamed that I didn't look more carefully at kind of like the funding the city was allocated for years and years and years, that we were really only doing what I see here as the kind of like seasonal, what you're now calling like seasonal winter overflow. It seemed like that's all we were doing, right? It really seemed that like we were just, and, and I've described it this way, that we were, we were, and I've even said like, oversitting at the other, in the formal, um, Tuesday chairs that we sit at. You know, I'm 58 now, I think at the time I said I was 56 or 55. I, I, how would I gather any belongings I might have left, any of my clothing, any of my food, any of my documents or kids' photos or all of my stuff, physically carry them, stand outside starting at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, like you see people do, right? Maybe get in, will I still be safer indoors? Will I still have the belongings that I need, my social security card, my ID, any of my things? And then get kicked back out at 7:00 in the morning, spend all day outdoors physically? Where would I go? And then physically, how would I, how would I do that? Like that's not, we don't just need more of that. And so you, you haven't done just more of that, you've made changes. And so, you know, you went through it in a lot of detail. But what I hear is that you've also added not just those kind of just overnight. So you don't freeze to death, because I remember when we had people on the sidewalks freezing to death. And then is added still congregate shelter, and I think you're calling it year round, right? Where you may still be in congregate shelter, but it's, there's maybe storage for your belongings. And you're not kicked out at 7:00 in the morning. And so I could like, I could physically do that, right? But then also, you've added in, um, and I, I know we're struggling sometimes now in, in zoning, we're calling it interim housing, and sometimes it is the bridge housing, where I think that's when there's like literally staffing, people on hand 24 hours a day, whether I need addiction help or I'm having a mental health crisis, or I just need workforce training or whatever, those kind of, I might need. I, I couldn't go straight into living by myself and being only checked on once a day, because I've had two years of trauma from being in a tent or something, okay? So, um, so there is that, but then there is also, I'm hearing, see, I'm losing track of my category, is it a kind of maybe single room occupancy that isn't as, with not as much social service capacity? Is, is that, is that like, what is the word for that?
Yeah, I don't even know if we, I mean, we call it, I mean, we tend to think about it as deeply affordable housing.
I'm trying to come up with like-
I know, I think, I think there's-
There are four types.
I, I appreciate that. It's so much easier if we can communicate in three or four. And so I'll, I'll work with you on that. But we, again, sort of bringing, these are new programs, these are major shifts in the system, to be able to house people that are these lower vulnerability folks who used to be able to self-resolve and just, you can't anymore, right? So it does tend to be deeply affordable housing with services attached, but the services are lighter touch, right? And can serve many more people. And so, you know, I don't have a better name for it, but, but that's a lot of the work we're doing through 500 and 500. Bring on 500, and I, I, I hope we're not gonna stop at 500, and I hope we beat that goal. But doing affordable housing that fast is just really changes the system in, in fundamental ways. So deeply affordable with some, we call them tenancy supports, um, but, but social services that are lighter touch. And we think that'll work for some of the, you know, those seniors who have other help.
I call that part like getting your life back, right? You are able to, you're spending the night there by yourself, right? You are, you're there, you're functioning, as you said, most of these people are, um, people who were maybe never unhoused their whole lives and were only going, jumped into maybe the, the temporary housing of some kind before they were in there. And hopefully have not even been in a tent, we hope, right? I've had constituents be in a tent for just a day or two, and we've been helpful. And OCHS has been helpful in finding them, getting them, and, um, getting them into shelter. And we've had, we've had, you know, I've had grandmas in my district, um, so close to eviction. And, you know, had their stays at the magistrate level and were running out and, and really had to scramble. I had to call the head of the housing authority personally to get them jumped back up into the city, and they were almost on the street. Twice, two different, two different grandmas. And, but in a lot of the housing conversation, I think it's Councilman Wilson, and certainly all members are kind of engaged in, how do we do our part? I've tried to also answer this, and I was, and you, I remember it was about a year ago when you told us that you had this idea of, you would like to create a challenge of coming up with a certain number of units in a certain number of days. And it wasn't before, there was, it was 500 and 500s. I really appreciate and love that it's got a goal and a timeline, cause you gotta have, you gotta have a deadline with a goal. So 500 days is great, but for us, you know, we've been at the affordable housing part for 10 solid years now. It was really, I think, Councilman Lavelle's task force legislation for the, creating the task force was in January 2015. So it's a solid 10 years. We need thousands of those deeply affordable units in the system. And, and if we did that, then we could get that flow going. So I'm really glad you emphasized that today too, because it, people get stuck in the congregate shelter because there isn't any room in the kind of like, as I always say, like, you know, whether we call it bridge housing or other kinds of supportive housing, where you have a door of your own, at least, right? Maybe you're still not in a place that's independently yours, but you have a door. And you maybe have a year that you could stay there or something like that, if it, because you're on a waiting list for housing that's a year long. Right? Cause I've also had a married couple, and I just said this tonight in the same public hearing, you know, I have had a married couple in a tent in my district for almost a year, it felt like, because the waiting list for housing was that long. You know, they decorated for the holidays on their tent and things like that, so, um, if we could get that, but that, that the, that the public understands that it's not the same 400 people in the 400 beds. But that, if that flow was better into, if we had more of the deeply affordable housing, that we could really get that flow, and then there would be fewer people in the tents. And I just want us to all kind of keep that in front of us. We don't actually want or need for there to be thousands of people on cots, right? We, we want to rehouse people, and that is one thing I think that over the decades DHS has done well. But it's just overwhelmed the old system, right? And so we have more, we have to have more capacity at each of the kind of nodes or stepping stones, I just don't know how to say it, right, that different people need. And they don't always go perfectly through them, but they, they may need them at different places so that they're not outdoors. And so I also kind of think we forget to talk about the fact that, and, and so I want you to elaborate a little more, that you're saying that you have a whole other side that we haven't really talked about much today, which is the family side, right? And so I, I do want, I think it's really important for the public to understand that, because it's, other places are not doing this as well as you are. So say a little bit more about that.
Yeah, I'm happy to. So, um, and this is, I think, a place where it is helpful that the Department of Human Services is sort of central to the COC, in that we are then able to kind of braid funding in order to support this population. We haven't talked about funding a lot, but I will just say, um, it is pretty shocking. It's, it is complicated, but it is also pretty shocking how little state and local funding goes to this problem. So last year, we got $2.6 million in state funding for this problem, coupled with about $27 million in HUD dollars for the most vulnerable. That 2.6 is just not anywhere near enough to do any one of these things, right? To have one really solid shelter. And so when it comes to families experiencing homelessness, we, we use our child welfare dollars, right? It is a child abuse and neglect situation, not, not, not literal abuse. We don't think families want to be in this situation. We're not blaming parents. We're just, we're saying this is a cause for concern in the child welfare system, and so we can use those child welfare dollars to support people, to protect children and their, and those, and thus those parents. And so we're able to, we're able to do that. And there too, we've had, um, challenges with more families experiencing homelessness and, um, and challenges with flow. So 500 and 500 is supporting both the, the families and the sort of single only shelter program. Get flow in the family shelter program as well. We don't, we don't, we don't want families growing up in hotels, we don't want instability there. We want families back with their own door and independence and support. So, um, thank you for raising that. We're, we're happy to talk about that, um, you know, another time as well. But, but, um, yeah, we're, we're, we're pleased to be able to support people in that way.
And how many people do we think are on that family side that where you're braiding together funding, including kind of funding for protecting kids, so that they don't-
I'll look it up. I actually have my computer up here, yeah. Something like that. I'll get it for you while we're talking.
Yeah, because it's, that is, I think, a fuller picture for the public on the capacities.
We, um, it's such a challenge for folks to even understand one side, that we try not to talk about them in the same conversation, because people, like the numbers get confusing even when we're only talking about one side. But I'll, um, but I appreciate, I mean, it's a sort of more hidden population too. You know, these, I, I can pull up the report, but I know from memory, these, these, these parents are not, um, parents with serious criminal justice backgrounds. They are not parents with significant behavioral health histories. By and large, they are parents struggling to make ends meet and, um-
The rent is too damn high, I'll say it.
That's right, yeah.
So, right, and so that's why, and the reason I think why it's so important for council to work on, you know, continuing to create the thousands of deeply affordable, um, units, but also, you know, um, to give credit to council and the GANNY administration for piloting the Lawyer for the Day program, because eviction prevention, um, as I, as I noted, I have two, two grandmas who were facing eviction. Because, you know, it's, it's like, what do they call them, rent evictions? You know, their landlords were just flipping the house, you know, they had owned the houses for decades. I mean, they had lived in my district as renters for decades. But, you know, somebody else will buy that house, or a private equity company from out of town will buy that house, right? As we know, they're buying hundreds and hundreds of homes, and they were renting in homes or apartments that were in homes. So it's really making, there's, there's more and different housing vulnerability out there. Nothing had changed about them, nothing had changed about their, you know, social security checks. They hadn't suffered medical expenses, they're fine. It's just that, well, the property value, you know, quintupled or increased tenfold, and so their landlord's selling to some private equity company. So the system, um, is causing that threat to our residents. And it is, it, in the, between, uh, just, just to throw it in, in context, because I, I do think we should keep it in front of us. You know, from the 2010 to 2020 census, we know that the city population lost, we lost population because of exactly what we're talking about right now. Because housing just got too expensive. People had to move outside of the city boundary in order to not be on the street. Um, and so it's really, I think it's an important issue for us, not just because of the human rights kind of elements of it, but because it's, it's, I think, a fundamental part of our job here, um, to not force people out of the city.
And if, if you'd like it, I can provide that number for you.
Oh, thank you.
Yep, so, um, this is a, this report is, is, looks at an annual cohort, so it's April 2022 to March 2023. So, um, very recent data, but not this year. Um, and so in, in our family shelter program, we serve 598 people in 184 households. And we've got a whole report on our, our site that kind of describes a bit about their situations.
Thank you, thank you. That really does give us a really good grasp, right? And if you weren't doing that, that would have increased that point in time count of who was outdoors. Right? That there's so much out, resources going to the most vulnerable population, which is our family population. Appreciate that. And then lastly, I think I'll ask about the flow rate, which I'm sure is difficult. But here's something that, again, I'll just kind of say what I've been, like, um, you know, what I can remember, my takeaways that kind of helped me try to figure out what kind of policies we need, which is the point of a post agenda, where it's like you're here to edify us and our policymakers, better policymakers. When I did a walkthrough at Veterans Place a year and a half ago, which is one that is federally funded and not city or county funded, here's the number I can remember. They had 50 or so beds, thank you to them, they were expanding, they expanded a little bit, and which is why we were doing the walkthrough at the time. They had about 50 or so beds. And so they had, they were able to permanently house 100 people a year. And so like, I can remember that, that's, I think most of us can remember that, right? So the average stay was about six months. Now that is, again, federally funded, and so they use the term transitional housing, and it's the HUD definition. And so people were able to stay up to 24 months, maybe some people stay 24 months, maybe some people only stay a week. But the average stay was about six months. And so they had, um, you know, they were moving through double the number of beds they had. Right? And so if we need to move through, you know, the 400 people that are in our emergency shelters, we really only need about 200 of these kind of SRO rooms or bridge housing or whatever we need. Um, and we're getting there, right? We didn't used to have Second Avenue Commons, which has SRO rooms. We didn't used to have the DeMarilac facility. We didn't used to have, help me with the other ones, I kind of scribbled them down. Well, Veterans Place added a few rooms, so it's more than 50 rooms now. Well, Veterans Place added a few rooms, so it's more than 50 rooms now. How many do you think we need? You know, we don't need 3,000.
No, no.
They would be empty.
Although I will say, people will do a lot for housing, right? Like, because housing is such a
These are the places where you cannot stay permanently, right? So I know you need thousands of the permanent housing.
Actually, I, right, okay.
But how much temporary housing do we need?
I mean, I don't know, Abby might be here. I, I, I think I like where, I, I might like where we are, right? And bringing on a little bit more, but getting that flow, the 500 and 500 is really about that housing, and that should be our focus. I just wanted to mention, and you'll see it if you have time to look at the slides a little bit, on 500 and 500, we're tracking flow through the system in a couple of ways. So, you know, you'll see a couple of slides there, like, you know, restoring emergency shelter to its intended purpose.
Yes.
And we've seen a tremendous increase in exits associated with 500 and 500. So these are not our only exits from shelter. We just told you half the people, like, turnover in 14 days. These are ones we know are part of 500 and 500. And like, you know, you'll, you'll look, I mean, it's, 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 these are small numbers, so when I say there's been, you know, a close to 100% increase in, in that flow, that sounds more dramatic than it is, but we are in fact seeing that flow. We're also, of course, looking at the length of stay of people who are staying longer than 14 days. We're not quite where we want to be.
And are you tracking it by the kinds of stays that they had, whether they were in emergency, winter, seasonal? You should, right? And because we really need to understand that. And again, in order to do our weird part, which is, you know, provide the accurate, as we mentioned today, zoning, or looking for a facility in one of our districts that you might be able to use, like, we need, in order to be a better partner for you, to understand the kinds of structures you need. We did this in affordable housing, too, right? Like, I have a matrix on my wall, and Lawrenceville came to my office like 10 years ago, and was like, we need more affordable housing. I'm like, do you need, like, first time homebuyer housing? Do you need, like, senior housing? Do you need women and kids rental housing? What kind of you need? And it's just a tiny little chart that says, like, well, actually, we need a little bit of each of these kinds, right? And so we have, you know, yes, we have renters, like, you know, female headed households with children, and we don't, because we don't want to lose all our Section 8 renters, because those are getting flipped also. We lost a lot of housing by houses getting flipped in Lawrenceville. And we have some, we have seniors that we don't want to lose in the neighborhood, and rent's getting too high, and we need first time homebuyer. And then it's like, okay. And then in the columns, you have, well, some people need three bedrooms, right? Seniors don't need three bedrooms, right? They need just one bedroom apartments. Sometimes, you know, we need for sale, we need housing, and then there's just certain funding streams. And it's actually not very complicated of a chart. It's different than social services, right? But in order for us to help you find the actual structures that you need, or to figure out if structures don't exist and need to be built, that's our side of the table. And so we need to understand this, I think, in ways that are simple enough for us to understand it. Awesome, awesome, I appreciate that. I think that's why I have Mr. Chair, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kayla Smith, are you still on?
I'm still here.
There you are, all right.
Thank you so much.
Floor is yours.
First, I want to thank Camilla, the Assistant Director Camilla, and Director Smith for all their work that they've been doing across the city of Pittsburgh. And you definitely can see and know that they're working and trying to do some amazing things in the community. So I do want to thank you, and I think, I want to thank the people who came before you, because creating an office like this with a very little budget, in the previous, you know, administration, the Pudido administration with Laura Jokrowski, I want to thank them for, you know, starting it, and Ricky Moody for the work he was doing with our office on City Council's side. But I really think that Camilla and Lee are doing such a great job trying to address a lot of the issues in a, in a broader way, and making sure they're working with all people. So I do appreciate that. In terms of the Allegheny County, first of all, I'm curious how many housing organizations that you have working in this area?
So I think you're probably asking about the number of, like, providers that we contract with across all these services.
The people you contract with, providers, the people that, you know, are supposed to be helping the homeless people and the unhoused population and providing services to make sure people are getting the help they need.
Yeah, so I, I think that we directly partner with, I don't have an exact number, I apologize, but I think it's probably 25 to 30 or so different organizations that DHS directly contracts with. But there are many, many other entities that don't contract with the county but are partners in a number of different ways that are part of the whole COC system.
Yeah, I think my, I've had frustration with this, this department for a very long time, long before, you know, the current administration. You mentioned about a lot of kids and children who are in open CYF cases and in that, in that area. And I, I had a meeting years ago and asked, we had some issues in Sheridan. At the time, half of the kids in Sheridan, Sheridan was 50% transient. Half the kids that lived there, one year, wouldn't live there the next year. Langley was having issues, the community was having issues, and still is. Youth crime was the highest in all of Zone 6 in Sheridan. And I asked what preventive services DHS was providing in that community. And at the time, the only thing they could point to was the, the long list of housing vouchers and the open CYF cases. To me, that wasn't preventive, that was, you know, I didn't think that there was enough going on then. Years later, I still don't feel like there's a whole lot going on there, but I do feel like there's a lot going on. And I hear Councilwoman Rose, and I hear Councilman Colgill, and everybody else giving a lot of accolades about what's happening in this area. So then I'm wondering if we, do you think that we are making a lot of progress in terms of the unhoused population?
Yeah, I, I do think we've made a lot of progress in building the capacity of the system to support people. And I, I, I said earlier, I think it is reasonable to hold the system and the partners here accountable to having that unhoused population drop as well, as we have additional resources in housing. So I think we've made a good amount of progress in understanding the issues in creating flow through the system. And as we have that flow in that housing, I think we can take next steps in order to make sure the people that are outside have a space to come into inside, and we can move them through the system as well.
And the other thing, you're saying the Housing Authority is, has been very helpful in terms of additional vouchers.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, just to be clear, I've been hearing negative reports about the Housing Authority, and yet I'm hearing conflicting things today, saying, okay, they are doing a good job. I'm hearing that we're doing a great job in addressing the unhoused population, but yet we need to change zoning because, a massive zoning change, not a little, a massive zoning change, because they're saying that we need to address the unhoused populations. So I'm wondering, are you anticipating more people to become unhoused? Or are you thinking that we're getting this under control? Which one is it?
Those might be two different questions. And I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm not an expert in municipal zoning and don't, you know, comment on the city's zoning efforts generally. So, you know, that, that, that might be maybe focused for a different person. But I think we, what we do need is ability to house people in, in community. And when Councilman Wilson asked about how we would get to 500 units, which I think is really key to getting that flow through the system so that, you know, homelessness is temporary, that relies also on conversions of properties for affordable housing. And those kinds of conversions are made more easy or more difficult, I think, based on municipal zoning. So
What do you think those are?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
What do you think they're, what do you think they're located within the city of Pittsburgh? Those types of buildings?
Not just within the city of Pittsburgh, they're all throughout Allegheny County.
Have you identified the ones in the city of Pittsburgh?
No, we're not in a, you know, we don't have a position where we've identified spaces in the city of Pittsburgh.
Okay, because you know, now there's been two articles about Marion Manor. There was a lot of things going on, and so I put in legislation, and so I'll talk about that in a second. But there is a definition in the Fair Housing Act that talks about disability, and disability in under the Federal Fair Housing Act is defined as people, they have now included people with drug and alcohol issues, which I absolutely understand that and value that and realize that that is a disability. But I don't know that that should be in with the same disability as somebody maybe with Down's Syndrome or autism, severe autism. And maybe there needs to be different classifications of disabilities, and so that we're not also jeopardizing people in areas with, that cannot help themselves. And what, some of, frustrates me is, I feel like there's been a lot of advocacy work around this, but I don't see a lot of results. And what I've seen over the years is now we've taken people out of mental health facilities that, because of abuse and things that were happening, it's my understanding back, you know, years ago, before I was involved in this. And now we've, what we've done is, now we're seeing a lot of those people that need help are now on the streets in tents. Some are, are doing things that are not okay. Some are just victims of, of things that are happening, and some are just truly down on their luck and need sincere help. But I don't see, and I don't, now we're talking about putting people in facilities again, but not the same kind of facilities that have all the resources with mental health experts in those facilities, not places that could provide some of the resources that they needed, and talking about better managing those properties so people were safe inside. And I think a lot of the fear that comes around all of this is the way we fail to manage things. We fail to make sure people are getting the help they need. We fail to have communications with the public. And yet we talk about, you know, a lot of times we talk about the social justice aspect of everything. But social justice is public engagement, and yet we want to stifle anybody that doesn't agree with us, or anybody who doesn't see the things that we want to see, because that's not always politically correct. So for me, I think if you really want to do things to help people, as Councilman Wilson said, it comes with us being able to peacefully coexist. It comes with us having conversations with the community. It comes with us making sure that people are having a voice, and that they have comfort in knowing that their elected officials will also be able to address any issues. So if they have a vote on some of these things, what they can do is say, you know what, these people need this type of service here, let's make sure they're getting all this service, let's make sure that there's hours of operations, maybe they need cameras in there to make sure that they're protected and safe. I, I also like the idea of people not having to live in, in housing, as Councilwoman Rose said, where they have to leave the building during certain hours. I'd love for people to have independent homes. But we have a, a home on our street where we literally had neighbors call the police because we watched somebody, I believe, that was the caretaker, who slammed the guy to the ground and on the concrete. And yet, weeks later, and if it wasn't for Camilla looking into it, we don't know how that would have, that would have been addressed, but we were able to find stuff out. But I will say that, it's my understanding that same caretaker is still there. So I think that I also worry about people being in individual houses where there is nobody. And then when you talk about maybe one of the, the solutions she and I talked about, Assistant Director, correct me if I'm wrong, was maybe taking away phones so he wasn't abusing the 911 system so much. But my fear is, he's probably really using 911 because he might be abused, abused inside the home. So what are we doing to protect the people, inside the facilities, outside the facilities? And I think that's part of the reason why we want to have conversations. And what I noticed was that the reason in our district that became, it became such an issue was because people kept doing things in our area without talking to the, without talking to me, without talking to my community. And community to me is a public meeting that anybody can attend. And we're making sure we're doing great outreach. So I, I, I just want to say that I have a lot of concern about what we're doing. I have a, a lot of concern about the lack of conversation. I do appreciate that the mayor and the county exec are in a very difficult situation with everything that's going on. And I don't want to be an obstacle, I want to be part of the solution. But I also am here to represent the people of my community, my district. And so I'm going to make sure I continue to do that. But I would like to know, and I'm going to actually start looking into this, how many organizations are getting funding, what they're getting funding, looking through their federal 990s, looking through the documents, seeing how, what they're supposed to be doing and who they're serving. I'm going to just start looking into a lot of that independently of, of anybody else giving us the information, because I think somebody needs to start looking into who's actually supposed to be helping all these people. And if there, if there's all these groups getting funding, whys are still such a significant issue. And what are we doing to make sure people are safe and protected inside homes, individual homes, on the streets, or in, you know, housing units? We have a lot of people that do not want to move into some of these facilities. And we had a girl living on the Portico for a very, for, for a while, until our Sergeant in Arms was fortunate enough to go down and talk to her, and find out she was terrified. He found a place for her to stay, or it's Camilla Jen, I think, I believe, and she was just fearful of going into a facility because she had been raped inside that facility. So I don't know what we're doing to keep people safe inside the facilities. And I think with the day and age now, where we have cameras and other things, I'm thinking there's got to be a better way to keep people safe and to make them feel more comfortable inside the facility. You know, I, who's, could you tell us who's on your homeless advisory board?
It might be up on the web, but yeah, so we can send a link to, to the list of who's on the homeless advisory board. Andy, I think, is grabbing it now, but we'll, we'll make sure that the council has that list.
And so the public knows that when we, the Federal Fair Housing Act currently, that everybody follows, it's not an option, you follow the federal fair housing laws, nine people and under can currently go in any home. So it's not as if we're preventing people from getting homes. Ten and over, we're saying deserves a conversation with the community. Because if you're talking about putting in a large portion of people in the community, the public deserves a right to have a conversation. They need to know that they are also going to be safe. They need to know who's moving into the community, and if they need assistance, are you providing it? Who's managing, managing the property? Do they have a good history of managing properties? And to make sure that if they see any abuse out of the people inside, that they can also be an advocate for the people staying inside, not just people outside. So I think that it's imperative that the, that the, the public has a right to know what's going on for 10 and over. And, you know, some of my concerns, we continue to hear about how rent is rising and how people are becoming more victims. I, I fear that some of the legislation will actually have unattended consequences. So I hope that we're working through some of those things. And as I mentioned to Councilwoman Colgill today, I have some concerns about the tiny house legislation, although I, I love the idea of the tiny homes, there's some things that I want to address in that as well. And while we can have that discussion with him. But could you also get us a list of the organizations that you have working with you?
Absolutely. We can follow up with both of those. I can see the website that, where Andy's looking at the, who's on the housing, homeless advising board, but I'll also make sure we get a list of funded providers.
And what I would say also is, when we talk about putting things into community, we act like the only people that are suffering from any types of disability are people that are, that you're aware of, or that are getting treatment and, and that are, that are unhoused. But there are a lot of people in residential areas that also suffer from mental health issues, including post traumatic stress and other things. And so when we're doing things and not talking to them, sometimes that aggravates and increases their, you know, their addictions, that increases their anxiety, there's all sorts of things. So I just think there's nothing we cannot accomplish together. I think a lot of people want to help the people with disabilities. I think people want to help a lot of people that are unhoused. I think people understand that, you know, a lot of us are one paycheck away from that. So I think people will, I genuinely think Pittsburghers are good and they want to help. But I think that means you have to have a conversation with them. And I, you know, Director, you and I have had conversations when I was council president about the importance of working with council, not just working with the administration, but working with council. I want to know what your thoughts are on that now, because I know at the time, Rich Fitzgerald had a conversation with, with us, and that we were all going to work together. How do you view that now, your relationship working with council now?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're here, this is the first post agenda session I've been invited to in this administration, and we're glad to be here and working with council. And I think we've heard, when we've been asked questions or had ideas that council members wanted to run past us, we've, we've been there and always, I think, answered those calls and happy to continue to do the same.
Okay, thank you. And I do appreciate you being here, and I do know that I'm, it sounds like I'm being hard, but I do have an issue with the lack of programming in, in the West End for preventive measures, and especially because, for our youth. And, and I want to be, I think of it, one for the REACH program, which at first, you know, I, I'm not a big fan of the swap the balance funding, because I think it should be private dollars and foundations that pay for it. But I do appreciate the work that they're doing, some of them, especially the REACH program in our district, because if it weren't for them, I don't think anybody would be working with our kids, you know, on the streets and other than our athletic associations. And our schools do what they can during the hours they have them.
Yeah, I, I would, I'd, I'd also be Yeah, I, I would, I'd also be happy to get back to you on that, or have a separate conversation. We've, we've moved a lot in the past, you know, decade, and even a lot in the past couple of years in moving our child welfare resources to prevention. And so, you know, these days, 60% of our budget is spent on prevention, and it is the kind of prevention, I think, that you're talking about at a school time, family support centers, childcare, violence prevention, diversion programs. And so, I don't have, of course, a full list of what we're doing in your community, but I would love to follow up with you on that. I think, I think, you know, and, and look, if we're not doing enough, I'd, I'd want to hear that from you as well. So let, let's follow up on that piece.
I love that, thank you very much. And I just wanted to, do you, have you done a needs assessment in, in the city of Pittsburgh? Recently?
I mean, I think we, we do a lot of listening to community on various issues, and some of our, like, community development block grant funds, I'm kind of looking backwards towards Abby, but require us to do more formal needs assessment every couple of years. But again, happy, you know, when we follow up around prevention, happy to hear a little bit more from, from you and others about, A, ways we might listen better to what community needs, and your ideas for, for what the city of Pittsburgh needs in terms of social services as well.
Okay. And I'm looking forward to working with you on those things, but, and as terms of the zoning and any housing thing, I want to work with you. I've actually identified areas that might be a place, places that you can put certain projects in our district, although I want you to work with the community, not just me. I mean, I'm one voice that speaks for several, but I don't speak for everyone. So I would love for us to have a conversation about what, what that looks like for District Two, and, and where, you know, things, or what programs we might be able to, to, you know, host over on our side of town, and how we can be part of the solutions. But I think it has to be that you're engaging the public and letting them know, you know, what has to happen, and what, you know, who you're putting in the community. I mean, they shouldn't have found out, there are three things that happened. They found out that there was going to be a homeless shelter, a temporary, I think it was emergency shelter, in the West End. But they found out through the media, and through social media, and through employees. And there was no conversation with them. And it was across from a playground, across from a library, and across, and within walking distance of a daycare. Then, after that, when she was addressed, and Representative Deezie and Senator Fontana also got involved, after that was addressed, then there was 50 ex-felons in Banksville with no conversation with the community. Banksville's not afraid of the felons, there was issues they had, because there's, Banksville's actually loaded with police officers, sheriff, re-sheriffs, and county police, and just different police. So they're not afraid, it's not that they're afraid, they are, they were, I think, mostly disgusted, there was no conversation. And second, that they were disgusted because there, it was at a place where there was, that was previously shut down. And they wanted to know, how do you think this person is capable of managing? And everything, it keeps coming back to management. And so I do think that that's a big issue. Then, we had two articles about the Marion Manor site in Banksville. And so that's three things, within just a few months, that people saw happening on our side of town. And I think that, that's what prompted, I know that's what prompted me to put in legislation. And then later, I found out that the administration was working on something. But, as I said to the administration, I'm, I'm, I was ready to work with them on some of this, because I do understand that there's a lot of issues, but what I'm not willing to do is to jeopardize the community. I'm not willing to jeopardize them not having a say, not having a voice, and not being notified. And I'm flexible on the council vote, but not that flexible. So I think that there's some things we need to talk about for our terms. But if there's a way that we can work with you on things that are happening in our community, I think the community, you'll find the community is pretty generous, actually. A lot of them donate to people, Kim, who runs, who's my chief of staff, Kim Salometro, she's, not only my chief of staff, but she works in the homeless encampments, in, not in, around here, but in Florida. And also Lori, my office, does a lot too. So it's not that we don't want to do some things, it's that we're not going to be told what's happening in the community without the community being engaged in it. And so, I just think communication is key, and I want to thank Director Schmidt and Camilla for their part of that. And Director, I'm looking forward to working with you and your team, and, and improving that for, for our side of town with your office. That's it for me, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. So I, I've got just a couple of questions here. I don't want to belabor this, we are at, we're going on three hours here. So the focus for today, again, was on the cold weather plan, and making sure that, that that's something we had an opportunity to talk about. I do want to have another discussion about homelessness more broadly, again, which I think some, a lot of members kind of veered into, some, some members did a better job keeping their straits on than, than others. But I do want to have that discussion, and so I'd like to, you know, call you back, probably in a couple, another couple of months. We might have to start scheduling that now, because it is, it's challenging to get on your calendar and, and get everyone else involved. But I do want to, but before we get to the, the summer months and the new set of problems, I want to get that on the books. One of the things that I did want to ask about, well, actually, I think, broadly, just on topic, do we believe that we have a plan right now that will prevent anyone from dying on our, on our streets in the cold, cold winter months?
I believe we, we will, we do have, and we will have all winter space for everybody to come inside. We cannot force people to come inside, and you've heard a lot about the street medicine teams, the field outreach teams, everybody encouraging folks to come inside. But I can't obviously control folks' actions such that if they stay outside and suffer the consequences of, of cold. But, but I think our responsibility is to have the spaces for people, and that's what we're committed to having.
Who will be doing the street outreach in, in my district?
There are, there are a number of partners, and I can, I can list some of them, but so, for us, the countywide partners include our field unit, so that they work directly for the link and are out all throughout the county, and Bridge to the Mountains, who also is a countywide resource. Is there anything else I'm missing? That is another kind of outreach resource. I mean, there's, of course, there's other folks, like, you know, the team at Unity, who have facilities in your district. They also, I think, just by, by nature, are engaging with people outside. So there are other people who, I think, provide some of those roles that are contracted with DHS, but formally, I would say our field unit and Bridge to the Mountains.
So countywide resources will be working in my consultation?
Yeah, I want to add one thing, just because there are medical teams as well. So you have the medical team with Pittsburgh Mercy over there, who I know are over there almost every day. And then you have the, the Pitt Street Medicine Team is also doing outreach over there, and they do it with, like, several physicians, nurses, a dentist. So you also have medical teams over there.
Post will also be there, in your district, the Post O Douge Support Teams.
They'll be doing homeless outreach?
They do outreach to connect them to Roots through our office, and additionally, they will also...
How would that work if there's no Roots team over there?
Because we do referrals within our office, so they can refer participants that are having housing instability into the Roots program. So we don't have an outreach team there, but we can still get them connected.
How often does that happen?
That happens a lot. I think you just received two or three referrals this week?
Yeah, they've been able to refer, like, directly with EMS, so while they're responding to somebody, there was, their most recent one was on 10th and, 10th and Carson. And so I, myself, just ran over, connected with a person, I was able to bring them to our downtown site to actually get connected with the team.
Okay. The other thing in terms of cold weather I wanted to mention is, another issue that's prominent in my district is squatting. Unauthorized occupancy, however we want to, want to call it. People that move into our abundance of abandoned housing, do what any resourceful person would do to stay warm and, and cause, you know, some, and often cause some, some real problems there. Have, I know that we've talked a lot about creating new policies around, about squatting. My, you know, Police Zone has talked a lot about being, that they believe they have the power to move people out of those, those scenarios, but now they're being told by, you know, the powers that be in, in City Hall, that they can't move people out of there. And specifically, the, the instruction has been, we don't want to send our officers to somewhere where they're immediately going to have to lose their job because of, of lawsuit. So what, what kind of guidance are we giving our officers in those situations? Are we, you know, are we saying that we'd rather have people in abandoned property? Are we going to move them out? What, what are we, what are we doing?
So maybe we, I'll talk to the commander to get some clarification, or follow up on the specific instances, but overall, squatting tends to get a little challenging for us, depending on who the property owner is and how easily they are available to us. We would, it tends to be a civil matter more than a criminal, unless the property owner is there to testify or to say, this person is trespassing on my property. They have to attest to that.
Exactly that situation. We had a property owner who lived in California, was, they, the property was abandoned, they had dreams of fixing it up one day, but they were never going to get around to it. People were squatting into that property. And although our officers, you know, had, from, from them, had authority to take them out of the property, they were told by City Hall not to, not to move them, not to create additional homeless people.
I am aware of that case. There was not a legal document from the property owner, it was just a letter, which would not, and the other, that would not be enough to trespass someone, without them being willing to come and testify. That was the interpretation I got from law. I'm happy to follow up more detail with you, but that's kind of where that came in. Normally, if there's a legal notice to vacate for squatting, sheriffs handle that, we don't. And in those cases, if it's a trespass instance, again, I know that property owner did not live here, which creates a little more difficulty. When our officers file a trespass charge, we still have to have a complainant that is willing to testify that they did not want that person there. And that tends to get a little complicated, that's all. So I'll follow up more with you on that.
Yeah, I guess, just broadly, so what, you know, what else are, when inevitably, I've got somebody who breaks into a property in Allentown, and they're living there and they're trespassing, what is our policy going to be, you know, over the next couple of months?
Yeah, I think we'll have to talk through that with the Law Department. I kind of questioned some of that myself, but that was the advice we got at the time. But I, I know we do have a lot of abandoned properties. We do have folks boarded up, but typically, it's, it's on the property owner to have some sort of order to remove the folks.
Okay. All right, well, that's all for me. Any members have anything more? Councilman Coggo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a, just a quick question. I was looking through the, you know, the flyer that you, you circulate, and I noticed some can and some cannot accept those required to register with Megan's Law. May, just, maybe I'm ignorant to this, but I know Megan's Law has something to do with sex crimes, is that correct? Does anybody know exactly what that means?
Yeah, I'm not an expert, but it is related to being registered as a sex offender.
Yeah, so, so do, when we check people in, say, Second Avenue Common, or 2AC, I'd like that better, it's a lot easier to say. If when we check somebody in, are they, is there a background check? I mean, how do we know if they're... Right, so we don't know?
No, that's, that's right. I think it's fair to say that, that the way that this is written is, is to try to, some of these programs, for the Salvation Army, for example, is a, it's a family shelter as well, and they have a wing that is an overflow shelter for individuals. So that, that is the thinking there, but, yeah, there's no background check that's happening onsite.
Yeah, so, so if we say we cannot accept, and there's no background check, then how do we know?
My, my understanding of the, this issue is that we want to make sure that, and the reason I think it's advertised this way is, we, we don't want, we want the person who this relates to, to get to a place where they can be, and not put themselves at risk either of consequences for violating...
And there's, is there, let me ask you this, is there, there's no criminal background checks or anything of that nature? When people check into 2AC, it's...
That's right.
You know, come as you are, right?
That's right.
Okay, okay. All right, I was just curious about that. Again, Erin, you know, you were taking a lot of heat last year, or maybe the year before, maybe it was two years ago now, I can't, I can't remember, it goes so fast. But I think you've done a really good job in turning that around, you know, it was a lot to deal with, it was a lot to deal with, when, when you, it was unfair, I felt, the amount of, you know, attention that you got around it. It's a very complicated issue, as we all know. But I feel like you're going in the right direction, and hopefully, we are sitting here next year without needing an alternative to, you know, additional interim housing, and maybe, you know, we'll have a firmer grasp on it. And let's hope for a mild winter this year, and maybe we can get all those tents off the trails by, by this time next year. Yep, you're welcome.
Anything else from members? Councilman Kelsmith leave? Yeah, I think she did. All right.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I got one more thing. I, I promise you, I'm done, I'm promise you. I mean, Camilla, there's a church on Grandview Avenue, right next to the library. It's vacated, it's boarded up. I believe there are people living in there. I, I think that's a job for you, correct?
I think we're working on that case, because we believe the owners of the space are allowing people to live there, because they work for, is that...
That's Arlington.
Oh, sorry, that's Arlington, that's a different church. Can you send me the info?
I don't know the name of the church, but I have a house right next to it, so I see it, we see it.
We're not the owner, so we're working with...
This is actually...
...to get a consent.
This is actually Councilman Kelsmith's district, I, she's not on anymore, okay.
Can you send it to me?
I will send it to you, yes. So, so if people are living there, my question is...
We can go and make sure that they're connected, and that we can relocate them and provide them with supports, but enforcement would be public safety.
Got you, got you.
We, we first like to go and engage, and usually, people are very willing to move ones.
Well, I know they're going in there. My fear is that they're going to start building fires in there, which I know I've seen many a times, and the place is going to go up in flames. So it's up, I think it's for sale, but, yeah, I don't know if the owners need to... It's right next to the Carnegie Library, right directly next door. If you're looking from Grandview at the Carnegie Library, it's to the left. I don't know the outro I could get it for you, though. Yeah, yeah, that's pretty easy to figure out, right? So I just got another couple of questions. I'm joking, I'm good, I'm done.
I'm not, I'm not going to ask again. Having exhausted the business of this post-agenda, this meeting is adjourned.